There's a one-day liquor license from the South Shore Art Center. I think they were expecting to hear it earlier and they said they could not. This is the usual standard one-day liquor license at the Art Center. It does yearly, I think this is their.
That was a special event.
That's the Young Club.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Young Club Winter Party. And it's going to be at the South Shore Art Center. An ask for a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the South Shore Art Center Winter Benefit Cocktail Party Saturday, March 3, 2018, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., 118 Liquor Road, Cohasset.
Second.
Second. Call and paper?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is approval of the RTF regulations for us. Chris?
These are just some amendments and I believe that there's only a couple of them where you see it, ballots. Just some, the board has already adopted these. These are just some updates that I believe we need to make. As part of our consortium agreement. It's a restatement, I believe, up top in Article 2, Section 8, just a restatement under the bylaws.
And I think in K and recyclable materials, I think those are further delineated through master vermic, uh, protection, vermic protection.
So the basics have been here. They're not new, so. Unfortunately, Brian is not at the moment. He could, who knows, he's got a little more detail than I do, so. These are fundamentally the same, but a couple are smaller.
We've already approved these, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is just an.
There were a couple of additions to the master state regulation that we needed.
That we needed to put in, right?
Yeah. We're not doing anything radical or new.
And these are.
He still needs.
Sorry.
These are authorized by the bylaw. So the slaver have the power to enact these on pursuit of the bylaw.
And they will go into the bylaw? Or do they?
No, they're kind of like the liquor regs. They're kind of, they're separate, they're enforced as rules.
Right.
They're empowered, the slaver are empowered to adopt them through the bylaws.
Okay.
Again, kind of like the liquor regulations.
Is there a reason why they don't get put in the bylaws?
Well, they can be, when we actually have this all amended, I think there's no reason we can't have it up there exactly, along with the liquor regs and all of them. But they're not, the bylaws, you can amend regs, the board can amend regs anytime they want.
Yep.
Bylaws have to be amended through the.
You gotcha.
So that there's a different process for them. So they still have enforcement ability.
Yep.
Is an adoption difference.
The only thing I was going to say is that blue bags are needed to dispose of your trash, no matter who you are.
That's actually identified in Article 5, Item F. But just before that, Chris, Article 5, Item E, waste originating from outside the town of Cohasset may be accepted by the RTF only if specifically allowed by the DPW Superintendent. Under what circumstances might that arise?
I think, the only way that tends to happen is if you have a contractor, for example, maybe they've done a bunch of landscaping jobs and some of them are in Cohasset, this is their end stop, and then they have to pay. So, you know, they come in for free, they get waived, they pay, they're done. So I think, I think it's only things of that sort where, you know, you might have a contractor who is doing work in Cohasset too, and this just happens to be the most convenient stop and we just, they pay for it. So they're not getting anything for free. That's my understanding of how that would normally work.
Can you?
And again, I guess the only other thing might be if somebody who lives in Cohasset was doing work on their house somewhere and they brought it back with them.
Just, that one thing sticks out and I would love to know what procedures we have in place to manage it.
Yeah, I, when I was reading through these, I noticed the same thing, wondered the same thing because we do have people that say, "I saw a big construction vehicle, you know, rolling up and just dumping their stuff in there." So I, just to give the board some clarity and the towns some clarity on that, it might just be, they do get waived and that's why they're not using the blue bags or whatever.
Yeah. Most of that is C and D, either C and D or yard waste, which is waived and doesn't go into the municipal side.
Do you understand that?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to follow up on that.
An ask for a motion to approve the regulations for operations of Cohasset through cycling transfer facility is moved.
So moved.
Second.
Call and paper?
Aye.
Next up is the fiscal year 13 tablet update from our resolve. You just, use your cell phone.
I know we had sent out to Don, Chris, some PDF copies. I don't know if anybody wants any hot copies, we bought a few. If somebody does, we can certainly.
I'll take one.
I'd like to look on.
Yep, we have the.
I'll take a caper, too.
We like, we like the fans behind it.
Yeah, absolutely. This is the one I wanted to say.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yep.
Okay. Again, Jim Powers from Powers and Sullivan, I'm a partner on the engagement.
And I'm Kyle Warren of Powers and Sullivan, audit manager on the weekly.
And we're here to discuss and obviously take your questions. You would prefer, you know, a lot of times we prefer, as I go, if you have questions along the way.
I'm fine.
If that works for us, because we're a smaller group, try to focus on the, it's our last comprehensive annual financial report. To start off again, I'd like to thank Chris and all his staff for cooperation all the way through. Mary did a great job before she left to make sure that we got everything we needed and Don hasn't done that much yet, but he got whatever we needed at the end and she'll fill in great as the next year comes up to get next year's audit done. This year, we have the, we have an audit opinion on the comprehensive annual financial report and affect your financial statements. This year, you did not hit the new rules for the single audit, where we have a schedule of federal awards. The criteria is that you have to spend over $750,000 of federal funds. You fell a little over $100,000 below that threshold, so that can come on and off. It's not an extra charge if it does come on. We still look at those grants, we don't ignore them. It's just that report that you've seen in the past does not have to be issued and filed with the federal government, so it doesn't seem anything this year. It all depends on the level of assistance that you do receive. The management letter, two will go over, but that is, if you've got a chance to take a look at it, pretty brief. One of the things that we want to work with Chris on is to obviously still do what we need to do for the major departments to make sure that things are operating as intended. You've got a pretty good system in place to reconcile everything. We did not have any audit adjustments to your books. The adjustments for the accrual-based GAAP financial statements are not considered audit adjustments because your books and records are maintained under the uniform municipal accounting system promulgated by the Department of Revenue, Commonwealth and Mass, so everybody, every city or town in the state has to follow the same accounting rules so they can certify free cash on a consistent basis and take a look, do the recaps on a consistent basis, et cetera. And then there's a conversion process from the budgetary side to get the full approval. All of the adjustments that are part of the comprehensive annual financial report is the town's adjustments. We work with them to generate that. You work with your actuaries to get the approvals for the OPEB liability or the pension liability, et cetera, as you go through. All those things are presented to them, to the town. We audit the veracity of the numbers and assist the town in putting together the financial statements. But these financial statements are not ours. They are the town's. Management has taken responsibility for it. Mary, Don and Chris basically have taken responsibility, saying that we have everything in here and it's signed a representation letter to that effect. They've told us as part of that, we're giving you everything you've asked for, we told you the truth, and that you're not aware of any pending or threatening litigation. We get confirmations from your outside attorneys to make sure that there's nothing that should be disclosed in the financial statements that could be, you know, a draw on your fund balances, et cetera. The financial statements themselves are the important part. Comprehensive annual financial report is made up of several sections and you receive the certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association again this year. This report has also been submitted in there. Again, it's the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. It's not the certificate of excellence in financial condition, okay? So even if you had the worst-looking financial statements from a numbers standpoint, you could still get an award.
Everybody wins.
Everybody wins, everybody gets a trophy.
So the Hindenburg could have gotten an award if they had a report that was coming down properly.
Right. But what it does, though, even if you had a horrible financial condition. The comprehensive report would really help the reader understand why. In the back of the report, there's statistical sections where you get a lot of 10-year information. So you can see in the back of the report that your general fund GAAP basis financial statements, you know, back in 2008 started at $1.5 million and it ended 2017 at $7.5 million, which includes $2.5 million in effect of your general fund unreserved, you know, fund balance plus, you know, $6 million or so of stabilization fund. And that represents about 17% of recurring revenues. And that is a good number to have. I'm not saying it's too much, we're not here to tell you from a policy standpoint, but that gives you a lot of financial flexibility. And inside the stabilization fund, obviously, you have a general stabilization fund of, I think it was like $3.5 million, $3.2 million. Your capital stabilization was 1.5 at the end of the year. And then you have the special education for about $275.
Total stabilization's at 17%, I believe.
Well, general fund.
And free cash.
And, well, general fund's kind of, the 2.5 is the budgetary total financial statement, total fund balance. It's not free cash. Free cash, there's a lot of things that affect free cash. Some make sense, others don't, okay? If you had a snow and ice deficit that you had to raise next year, the way it works is your free cash is increased, okay? So when I had a deficit, but my free cash has increased, but then you can use free cash to pay for that deficit. So it's kind of a budgetary, there's some budgetary uniqueness in Massachusetts, but from a GAAP standpoint, you don't want to put in a free cash number because they want to see what's your real budgetary results and what's the surplus. Things, when you take a look at your budgetary financial statements, sometimes looks like if you took a look at this year, saying, "Oh, we lost almost a million dollars because we had," you broke even pretty much, you had a little bit of a surplus, but actual revenues compared to actual expenses. But then you had a million dollars' worth of transfers in and a little over $3 million of transfers out. Well, a lot of that transfers, you know, went to the stabilization fund, okay? So you're funding that particular stabilization fund. So when you look at just the general fund, it looks like you may have had a deficit, but you really didn't. You just switched it to a longer-term reserve that requires a two-thirds vote to get it out. That stabilization fund is really just a sub-fund of the general fund. You can have stabilization funds for your water and sewer funds also. So GAAP tells you to, when you report this number to the outside, put together your stabilization fund plus your general fund's budgetary, come up with the $7.5 million, which is your real amount that you have available as a surplus. And that's the 1.5 that was back in 2008, if you look at the stat section, for the 7.5 that you have at the end of this year. Healthy, good position.
Can I ask a question?
Good.
So you don't hang the stabilization funds on the balance sheet? Is that true?
No, no, it doesn't hang as a liability. It is a, all the stabilization fund is that you decided to vote to transfer a fund balance from just going through a regular voting process at our meeting and everything else and say, "We're going to use free cash for this particular purpose," where you get 50%. And you say, "You know what, we're going to move it to this other, in effect, sub-general fund account. And we're going to, anything putting in, we're going to have to have two-thirds vote, anything taken out."
So, but where does it, where does it show up in the, is it in the cash flow statement? Is that where you?
Well, there's not a cash flow statement for the governmental funds.
Right.
The only place in these financial statements, and again, they're a little different than commercial, is in your enterprise funds. And that's probably the more important statement when we go to talk about that, to take a look at your cash flow funds. Your budgetary financial statements are pretty much a cash flow fund. So if you take a look in the back on.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight? Yeah. On page seventy-eight, that gives you, in effect, the general fund alone's cash flow statement. It includes like warrants payable, which is at the end of the year, but in effect, you recognize the revenue that you collect. There's not a lot of accruals in there, most of the receivables are fully reserved and you don't recognize that revenue until, in effect, the full accrual statements. And then your expenditures are what you appropriated for the year, what you actually paid in cash, what you actually paid from last year's encumbrances. So any carry-forwards from the prior year that you had voted to carry over, and that's added to the current year budget and the appropriation. And then at year-end, by June 30th, you know, you can't pay everything by the end of the year, bills come in, et cetera, so you hold your books open and you record, in effect, a payable for those expenses that you incurred in fiscal year 2017 and that were actually budgeted in 2017. If you actually paid something, I had an expenditure in the general fund, for example, that you ran out of budget room and say, "Oh, well, I'll have to shift that to next year." No, you don't shift that to next year. It's still recorded on the budgetary basis. You show an appropriation deficit and then you need to deal with it as part of your next year's recap to recover those particular funds because of, like the snow and ice deficit.
Yeah. So it gets reported as a net change in the fund balance?
You got it.
That's all?
Yeah. And then, then this.
And there's a schedule behind that that shows where it went into all the different funds.
Yeah. And so, and then, and then that gets converted into the governmental funds. It's called the modified accrual basis of accounting for the general fund. That gets into the seven and a half and we add back into stabilization. And inside of that, it's almost cash basis, it's kind of probably more of a modified cash as opposed to a modified accrual.
Yep.
So any long-term assets or liabilities are not recorded in those financial statements. It's all, it's almost like a.
Checking account.
Yeah, checking account, account assets, liabilities. Here you recognize some revenues, but not a lot. You can do 60 days worth of receipts. So if you're real, whatever you collected in real estate taxes in July and August, you can get rid of your deferred revenue because they say that in that 60 days, those funds are available to pay for current liabilities, you know? So if you have payables on a 60-day term, that's where you have that. In addition to that, the only other real accrual that's part of that is that you have potential refunds and abatements on taxes. Somebody has paid, so you've already recognized that revenue. But when you go and you talk to the assessor and you say, "What do you have is outstanding ATB cases or the abatements and refunds in the pipeline?" That's recorded as a liability because, you know, the revenue's been increased, so you need to reduce to get that. Everything else is pretty much, again, it's modified cash basis of accounting. And that's true not only for the general fund, but also your non-major funds, which would be your special revenue funds, your capital project funds, and a lot of your permanent funds, the kind of trust funds that go along with that. And then from there, you go into the full accrual statements, which is almost getting there to close to being equal, but not equal to a commercial statement. That's where you add it, all of your long-term assets. So what do you have as capital assets? What's the value school? Less depreciation, okay? What's your liabilities? What's your long-term liabilities, both from OPEB liability that they have measured right now under the old standard, the net pension liability, your bonds payable outstanding, landfill liabilities or any other type of accruals? If you had a judgment payable that needed to be paid and done over several years, that's where all that comes together. Next year is when the OPEB, the new OPEB standard comes in, which is similar to what we discussed before on the net pension liability. And so that liability will come on board next year. And then your problem then is that you're kind of ending with the standards for the next several years, but you'll get a better picture of really what your true net position is, current assets, current liabilities, long-term assets, long-term liabilities, and in effect, gets you down to your net position. And there's some things called deferred inflows and outflows.
So that'll get, that'll get posted to the, the schedule called the statement of net position on page 27? Is that where that will?
Yeah, that's right. And then.
So it's going to be right out, that's going to be a line item?
That's going to be a line item that's going to hit you square in the face with what's there. And, and so your, your OPEB liability is going to be, it's about $41 million right now, we can jump around, but that's a big thing we obviously want to talk about as you go through.
So is it possible that our, our non-current liabilities will go from $78 million to roughly another $40 million on that?
Well, what will happen.
Whatever it is, I mean, I'm just, I'm not using the right numbers, so.
No, that's okay. Yeah, so you, you, under the current standard, you've already booked $12 million worth of a liability.
Yeah.
Because that standard says, what was your, what should have been your ARC, what you should have paid this year in order to fully fund it? And what did you actually pay? And the difference becomes a liability.
Okay.
You didn't see that in the previous years before the pension standard because you always paid what Norfolk sent you as a bill. So it was more of a liability, did you pay your bill?
But you're going to have to start with a starting balance, right?
Well, that $12 million will go away, but in effect, the net between the 41 and the 12.
Will show up.
Will show up as the increased liability.
Okay.
And so you're, you're going to go up, you know, 12, 20, about 30, another $30 million worth of liability. So your net position will still be positive in total. So if you look at your first column, you know, you'll still have $42 million worth of, it'll go down to say $12 million with the other 30. But the second to last, the last line on page 27, say the first column, that 14, that $15 million liability is your, in effect, almost like your, your non-restricted, almost your non-capital asset, because that's the line up top, they'll say, "All right, what's the net value of your capital assets less what you still have outstanding on debt?" Those two numbers get netted together to give you the $50 million worth of your asset values that you go forward. So you still have a pretty good-sized liability to overcome. But one of the good things.
So can I ask you a follow-up question?
Yeah.
You know, the state calculates all these borrowing ratios that allow you to, you know, they put caps on how much you can borrow.
Right.
Are they going to change those or are they going to stay the same? Are these, are these liabilities going to be counted in those DOR borrowing ratios?
No, the real borrowings would go through, the only time those would be counted is if you decided to do an OPEB liability or pension, a liability debt in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's not worth doing for several different reasons. And one would be the taxable bonds.
Yeah.
So you don't get the benefit of the lower interest rate, so you need to, in effect, earn more money. The spread has to be higher, obviously, between investing those funds and what you're paying.
Yep.
A couple of places did it and it didn't work out that well. It's probably working out a little bit better now, but they had done that before 2008. And so, you know, the.
Your jersey comes to mind.
Yeah.
Quick question, when you said that the accounting's going to change for the OPEB liability next year, is that next year's audit of FY '18 or is it for FY '19?
Eighteen. Eighteen. There's two different standards related to OPEB. One is GASB '74, and that related to your trust fund. You have $2.5 million, you put in $475,000 in fiscal year 17 for that. So that's the standard of how you account for the trust fund. And then '75 is how the employer, you, record your liability and your expense.
The actuarial liability.
The actuarial liability, which is now kind of, it's calculated, it's an accounting liability. Before, it's kind of an actuarial, but the actuary calculates.
No, I know, now, now it shows up.
Right. Before, it was an actuarial liability that you could read in the financial statement that's not in there.
But it wasn't booked to your statement.
It wasn't booked to your statement.
But now it's booked.
Yeah. So anybody that's familiar with governmental accounting standards can go to the OPEB footnote and find that you have $43 million worth of gross liability under the new standard less $2 million of.
Of the trust.
Of the total.
Is this just statewide or is this nationwide?
That's nationwide. All of the GASB is nationwide. The only thing that I mentioned earlier, the only thing that's statewide is the uniform municipal accounting system. And so that's the standard that, you know, Don has to maintain, is books by and how the treasurer has to account for, you know, the activity in treasury. The collector has to do that, and this is how the assessor has to do that, so they have several manuals and standards that they propagate that, again, is consistent within Massachusetts. That's why the budgetary statement in the back is only required supplementary information because the rating agencies or the users know that that's just unique to Massachusetts. There are different rules in different states. Some states have rules for cities and towns that they have to do in accrual-based budget or their budget is once every two years. And so there's all kinds of variations, so you need to understand that. But the real thing they compare you to is your governmental funds is really the ones that they take a look at, and your enterprise funds to make sure that you're supporting that enterprise fund and they're not seeing a big transfer coming from the general fund over to the enterprise fund to support that operation.
Okay.
And so those are the type of things that they'll look at. But what it does do is it, it will hit you right in the face next year, saying, "Okay, I don't have to go to two places to see the effect of this."
Will that change people's credit rating next year, potentially?
What they take a look at is, is whether or not you're doing anything about it. That's probably the thing, because the rating agencies, when you do your calls, normally say, "Okay, how are you, what are you doing about OPEB? We know it's not required under Massachusetts general law, like pension is. However, are you, have you adopted some strong business practice to recognize the fact that you have a unfunded liability that's a lot higher than your pension liability that's going to, in effect, the same people, actually more people, because the school teachers are, their pensions are through the state. And so that liability is funded. And so are you funding this? Have you have a plan in place to look at the actuarial evaluation and say, "Yeah, we're contributing, our fund is here." And they realize it's going to take time. This problem did not come about in one year, two years. And so they realize that if you're doing something about it and have a plan, that usually won't give you a downtick. It might give you a stable or an uptick compared to what everybody else is doing. And I think you're right on track with communities of similar size and demographics, et cetera. You've recognized it and you're putting money aside. What would hurt if you probably, from a rating standpoint, and I can't tell you about them, but if you stopped doing it, okay? If all of a sudden you decided, "You know what, we can't afford this anymore. We're going to pull this out of the budget line item and let's take a vacation." You may have to do that at some point in time, but there's a risk relative to what might happen to your rating. Again, then you take a look and say, "Well, we don't have any long-term borrowing in the next five years. We've built everything we needed to, so the rating isn't as important. You've got to get it back in five years." So that's, you know, management decision of how you go through that. But to me, you spent this much time to increase your general fund's fund balance to a healthy level and where you have that flexibility to do a lot of things that you want and you have two significant stabilization funds for, you know, for portions.
Yeah.
Then, you know, you're, you're in a good position if something happens in the future, you never know.
Yeah.
So I think you're in good standing there. So the OPEB, one of the things on OPEB, and we've talked about it before, is the discount rate. That has a big determination on what, how you go through and how you, how high your liability is. Right now, you're using, and when the actuary went through her process, she took a look at what's, in effect, what's called a crossover point. Is there a point in time? Is there a point in time in the future, based on projected payments for each year and projected contributions? That the trust fund may run out of money. Okay? Depending on what you go through. And right now, her projection was the first fourteen years you'll have money. So at that first fourteen years worth of this liability, that you can use a higher discount rate. Because you'll be earning that and it'll be invested at uh, what is about a, a seven and a half percent expected investment uh, return. You're invested in vehicles that, and again, that's what a three percent, you know, your real rate of return is really about four and a half. Okay, it depends. And again, Steve, that's uh, that's one of the biggest things we go through all the time. Yeah, you keep your fingers crossed. Everybody will point to this year and say, well, that's low. But, but your real rate of return, but realistically, there's a blended discount rate that takes into effect. So after year fourteen, you have to use a, a, a risk-free rate. And in effect, what it's, it's defined as, and, and, and the actuary used the bond bias twenty-year uh, uh, double A, you know, high-grade uh, municipal rate. So they use the risk-free rate there for the balance of it. So what you ended up with, and that was as of June thirty, three point five eight for this particular standard. It was a little lower if you were using another rate, but reasonable, you know, to quarter of a cent off from another one we were looking at. Uh, so you ended up at a blended rate of three point eight nine. Okay? So it gives you, and again, the other thing that you'll see both in the financial statements is that, that three point eight nine, they give you a one percent higher and a one percent lower. And so that gives you the ability as a reader of a financial statement to say, you know what, I think the three point eight nine is low. And what will my, my liability be if it was, um, if it was lower? So it'd be forty-one at three point eight eight nine, it would be thirty-five at four point eight nine. And it would be forty-nine million dollars at two point eight nine. So you have the ability and you have the information to go over the notes and say, okay, I wanna put everybody on the same playing field. So if you're comparing your community to someone else and they're using a five percent rate, you can say, alright, but they'll give you a four percent rate, you'll say, okay. We're really, you know, we're, we're gonna have to get the apples and apples in here. Because uh, um, that's kind of the way it's going.
Who, who actually calculates that rate for our town, that actuary?
The actuary does that based on.
Who is that? What organization? Do you, you wanna do that internally or do you do that?
No, no, I have a, 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 what's that? Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah. Hey, Matt, she does a lot of uh, governments in Massachusetts.
So we hire, the town hires an actuary?
An expert, yeah.
Who gives, and then gives us that rate, and as a result of that process, we come up with three point eight nine?
Right. And then we audit the work.
And you check and you audit that?
We check, audit the work, and this is not an exact science.
No, I know, I understand.
So we take a look at reasonableness, we take a look at similar communities, different actuaries, we take a look at uh, what.
So in your view, auditing that, is that reasonable?
If it wasn't, you'd have a quantified opinion.
Seems to me that our county one is higher than that, right?
The county one is eight percent.
Right.
And that's, that's kind of the highest highs you see around.
Funny then.
Um, you have the ability if you wanted to, but what I, what I said is that, like the state's going down to like seven and a half percent, they're going down. So if you went down to seven and a half percent, you still have that same sensitivity analysis in the back. Where you will adjust that. If you talk to some, the rating agencies, S and P, and Moody's and things, they, internally, they have their own algorithm. That they put everybody else, everybody in the same playing field. So they look at this number and say, okay, that's what they're using, this is what we think it would be. And so when you get your ratings, they look at it that way. You know, I'm not exactly sure how they do that, but we take a look consistently. Uh, very few places are under seven percent. I think uh, Wellesley is at six point seven five percent, but they have their own retirement system. Okay, they're hoping for better. And uh, Andover's at, I believe, six point two five, yeah. Again, they're investing a little bit higher, but they, they're using a, a risk factor to lower their expectations from an accounting standpoint. You could, if you wanted to, as we go through that, we know from the actuary and another audit firm audits. The regional retirement system, Norfolk retirement system. And we evaluate that audit, we take a look at the audit firm to determine whether or not they have a good reputation and can do that. And we use that as audit evidence to support what the town decides to use as their liability.
Okay.
Nothing in there says that if you wanted to book the seven percent, which is known and that number's audited. You could book that liability and increase your, your liability.
Yeah. So if we wanted to, the town can make a decision, I'm not suggesting it, but we could, the actuary come in, the decision was around three point eight nine. Would it, but if we wanted to as a town, could we make that four point three?
Uh, you, the four point three, that one would have to then require a separate audit, because the actuary and the auditors only give you the one-point sensitivity analysis. So if you wanted to go that low, there's no reason to, to go that low.
Right. I'm just theoretically asking if you could.
I mean, what you have to do is obviously you need to talk to um, Norfolk and, and with the advisory board, you do have a say in that.
No, I'm talking about, about the town one.
Well, the town.
The town one is at three point eight nine.
Oh, you, you, OPEB?
Yeah, so, yeah, the, we have our, Kim's in it, I'm sorry, I mixed that up.
That's okay.
So that can say the actuary gives a report, we look at that, but if we wanted to, we could change that to four point two five?
Well, it has to be in accordance with actuarial standards, you just can't change the assumptions. Uh, we take a look from an audit standpoint, are you investing in a manner that's gonna achieve that rate of return? A reasonable rate of return with a, look at the standard deviations, what do you think is going to fall into that range? So if you came in and said, we wanna use one percent. Well, I don't have a problem with that, because you're not investing to earn one percent a year.
Gotcha.
You know? And the same thing, if you wanna put in ten percent, would have to take a look at what you've invested in, whether you're doing it yourself, whether you're part of the print board that has and professionally manages that for OPEB liabilities. And so we would bring that up to Chris and the board. But you work with the actuary to come up with the assumptions, as long as they're within the actuarial standards. And they, in effect, sign off on that.
Yeah, without being an expert in this field, it strikes me that three point eight nine is reasonably conservative.
It's reasonably conservative on that, and, but that's not how you're investing the funds.
Right.
You're investing the funds to try to achieve a seven and a half percent rate of return. Your real rate of return, meaning without inflation as part of that, it's about four and a half. She's using a three percent assumption. One of the things that, when you take a look at the retirement system, they use a four percent inflation rate. Which is, again, should come up with their eight percent discount rate.
Talking about Norfolk?
Did I say Norfolk?
No, you just said retirement system.
Oh, the retirement system, Norfolk is the retirement system.
Norfolk, yeah, okay.
So Norfolk uses four percent, probably about the highest inflation rate that we see. But that's added to the real rate of return, so they're investing that assuming.
Subtracted.
Inflation rate, yeah.
Right, okay, to give you that real rate of.
You know, less investi- uh, investment expenses and then um, plus a, a, a risk factor that everybody throws in. They usually, most places will push it down a little bit, saying, you know what? The way we think these uh, different investments will uh, achieve long-term rate of return. Again, this is not like a five-year projection or a ten-year. Most use the ten to a twenty-year projections on what they think a, a particular uh, investment may burn. You know, alright, we're gonna take a look at the, the, whatever it is that you're investing in. And if you use a short-term horizon, that's not what the liability is gonna be paid out on. It's a long-term horizon. If you have a, a twenty-five-year-old uh, person that's just started working, and they're gonna work till sixty-five, well, there's forty years right there, and then they're gonna live another twenty years. You've got a sixty-year horizon of how to fund that and what the payoff would be.
Typically, a pension liability is, I mean, it, it, it's not unusual with the structure of their scenario of assuming a hundred years.
Yeah. Now, a lot of them, when they take a look at that crossover point, they're like ninety-one years to the last payment for some of them. Obviously, it's a small payment is the last one, the last one, one of his.
If you end up on a liability matching against the pool, you'll consistently end up more risk averse and, and upside down in that, in the pension liability than you'd ever like. But if you have, say, an individual structure like an annuity, well, that's liability matched to the individual.
Right.
So you can then use just, you know, one, one human being's expected lifespan. So going on a hundred years gives you the flexibility to accept more risk and return for a greater renewal return.
Thank you. Other things that are interesting there, though, we had talked about the cash flow statements for the, like the water and sewer fund. That's the more important one to take a look at, it's because you don't present budgetary financial statements that Dawn can put together for you or how you budget that as you go through. Cause you, you kind of budget like the general fund, cash in, cash out. But GAAP only allows you to put in the enterprise fund political statements. And so when you take a look at it, you need to replace and say, what's my cash flows? What you'll find is that the um, um, you know, the, the sewer fund pretty much broke even from an operations standpoint. But you've gotta replace depreciation with, with principal payments, because that's what you budget. So you have to take a look at that. And that you had a, about a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar surplus of the sewer from operations is what you need. The other changes that you'll see, it won't come up from operations, Steve, I have to adjust that, you know, so if you go to the.
Well, actually, I'm looking at page thirty-five.
Right.
Okay, and when I walk through it, it shows me that uh, for example, on an operating basis, uh, water produced a two point three million dollar uh, excess.
Right.
Right. Against expense. Sewer, not so much. Sewer, sewer is, you know, on a cash, it looks to me on a cash flow basis, it's negative.
The, but that's on page thirty-five, and that's the operating, that's a full accrual statement.
Right.
Thirty-six is your cash flow.
Okay.
So on thirty-six, see, what you'll see is that the sewer fund from operations.
Right.
Generated a cash flow plus a seven hundred thousand dollars, and that's the budgetary basis of accounting, kind of. But you have to convert this into a little bit of budgetary piece, because when you come down to the transfers out. So you go seven hundred thousand dollars, less the hundred thousand dollars to get to a six hundred thousand dollar cash flow there. And then you have uh, special assessments that come in. Those are long-term assessments that, you know, not from operations.
Yeah, non-operating.
Non-operating pieces. And then you um, you take a look at your interest expense and your principal payments on bonds and notes. And the other uh, seven hundred K here, it all balances out from operations. When you peel out like the acquisition account of assets, uh, additional bonds, they had about a hundred thousand dollar loss from the adjusted. The, the budgetary, the, the, coming from what we're used to with the commercials side.
Yes.
To pull out things that don't show up in the cash flow from operations. It's kind of, if I did a cash flow using the budgetary basis of accounting, interest expense would be up top.
Right.
Principal payments would be up top as part of operations. Depreciation obviously doesn't come into play. So they about broke even that year from, from operations. If you take a look at the water fund on the same page, they generated uh, three and a half million dollars worth of cash from operations. A hundred and four thousand dollars obviously transfers out, so in a, in effect, we show it's down to three point four. Um, inside of that, we ignore the capital, uh, the acquisition of, uh, construction of capital assets of four hundred and twenty-eight. You had principal notes payments of two million dollars. And um, then you had interest expense of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, so that gets you up to three million dollars. So from operations, you made about three hundred thousand dollars of a positive, and that's the way you budget. So it's self-supporting for what it's doing right now. You could take a look at maybe assessing them additional, additional charges if you wanted to for Chris's time, for Dawn's time, for uh, overhead items and things like that. But for the way you budget and the way this works, it's still breaking even or generating a little. You know, obviously, the, the acquisition of capital assets, most of that's funded through bonds, grants, things like that. So that's capital related, so those aren't things that you really need to be concerned with, cause that, you know, you, you take in the bonds.
On an operating basis.
On an operating basis, and you, you don't budget depreciation, you budget debt service. In effect, that's how you replace it. So if you borrowed five million dollars for capital asset, and you spent the five million dollars. Well, your depreciation on that long-term asset might be over forty years, but your principal payments will be over twenty. So you need to budget non-depreciation, you need to do that based on your cash flows, and which, that's what you do. So you look okay on these particular funds to make sure that it's not a draw right now on the general fund, except for maybe some indirect costs.
On the sewer fund there, it looked like it was a, a negative two sixty-one thousand on investing activities. Versus like on the water, it was a plus seven million.
Oh, no. Um.
This is on page thirty-six.
Page thirty-six?
I was wondering, was there an investment loss there or something?
No, there wasn't an investment loss, there was uh, in- interest ex, oh, two, two hundred and sixty-one thousand. Um.
They bought something, right?
No, that sales, that's, investment income was twenty-two. They had some long-term investments, and that's the sale purchase of investments. So you turn from cash to investment. So say if you, if you bought an investment, your cash is going to go down to two hundred and sixty-one thousand. But your investments are gonna increase by two hundred and sixty-one thousand.
So they may have a lost investment, they made an investment in something?
They made an investment in something, so you didn't lose value.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if you lost value on that, where it would show, would be the, in the investment income line. So in the investment income line, you made twenty-two thousand dollars on that. And so.
Gotcha.
GAAP requires that you adjust this to market, to fair value at the end of the year. And so if you had a, you know, a temporary loss or gain on that, you're recognizing that in that particular period. So that, that would show up there, Kevin, so that's.
Thank you.
So can I just ask a quick?
Yeah.
Let's go back to sewer.
Mm-hmm.
The special assessments, that is um, that would be what?
That there were additions made to um, individual properties years ago that you borrowed money for. To connect them to the sewer. And so each individual taxpayer, homeowner.
Pays to our separate time.
But they can either pay that upfront in one, or what a lot of people do is pay that over time. And so if you took a look at your balance, your statement of net position on page thirty-four, you'd see that there's about seven and a half million dollars worth of assessments that are due over time. Uh, if you take a look at the third number down, five fifteen, I mean, sorry, the fourth number down, six hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's what's due at fiscal year eighteen. And the six million nine, which is in the noncurrent section right below that, that's the long term. Now, if somebody sold their property, they, they could, they could pay off the whole thing, or somebody can come in and say, alright, so you, you.
Which, which is why probably the special assessments.
Right.
On the next page is slightly higher, so if someone sold properties, they just paid off the assessment.
Right. And that's when you, see, but when you go over to your non-operating revenues on page thirty-five. You don't see any special assessment income.
Right.
Because it's recognized in the year that they has that, so we recognize it there. And that's why you see the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was received in cash on your statement cash flows.
Now, that's supposed to go towards paying off the debt that was incurred, right? That doesn't get booked against revenues, does it?
Well, it gets booked against revenue, but you had principal payments on a lot of these notes of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that year. Uh, this year, and two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars worth of interest. So seven twenty offset seven thirty-four worth of principal that was due this year, and two hundred and seventy-one thousand. So what you wanna do is.
So, but that goes, that goes, the seven twenty goes to pay principal, right? It doesn't go to pay off?
It's just revenue that comes in, that's coming in to pay debt service, they also pay as part of that.
From the general. So, but doesn't that overstate uh, you know, uh, operating cash flows? I mean, if, if, so.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to get at is, you know, if you, if you look at the sewer proprietary fund, statement of revenues, expenses and change in net.
Yeah.
You have an operating income loss of four hundred and forty-five thousand.
See, but it doesn't overstate operating, it sounds like it would, because it's like, oh, that's a special assessment coming in. But realistically, when you started this process, you knew that there were going to be a lot of payments that would be spread out over time. Kind of that matched the debt service payments.
Right.
And so you have a debt service appropriation that you need to make, because you have a bond on it, principal and interest. And that you knew, that most people don't pay it all off at once, they're gonna pay it off over time. So that's seven hundred thousand dollars you expect it to come in. So that's seven hundred thousand dollars you expect it to come in, although it's not operation because it's capital related, to offset that.
Right.
And the difference between the seven twenty and the principal and interest piece is what you have to make up as part of your operating revenue. See, it's, it, this doesn't, the governmental model on this type of thing with special assessments doesn't necessarily fit into a cash flow statement need because you have to put these capital-related items in a capital section. Where if you converted it to a budgetary cash flow statement, that would be up as, almost like operations, or at least its own section that says, here's the, you know, it, it, here's, here's that. And the other thing that could happen, so say if everybody paid their special assessments upfront.
Right, yeah.
Well, what you have to do is you have to be disciplined yourself.
And budget.
Not to go spend it all.
Right.
Well, you gotta, you gotta pay off the debt.
Right, you gotta pay off the debt. So you're gonna have to, like, internally say, well, guess what, we have a debt service reserve here. And it states trying to change some of the rules that allows you to, uh, set this aside a little bit easier. But internally, so your, um, retained earnings that they certify for your enterprise fund would include those. And nothing would stop you from going out and spending it, except for financial discipline to say, oh, wait a minute, we still have ten million dollars worth of debt to pay this off. And, and everybody paid their seven and a half million dollars upfront.
So it stands.
We're gonna budget that every year where Chris would be using that retained earnings as part of the budget process to say, okay...
By law, we don't have to put that against the principal amount that was borrowed.
You could spend it on anything you want. You could give the water, sewer department, seven and a half million dollars worth of raises if you wanted to.
But the net effect of that is to transfer that debt over to all the rate-based payments, right?
Now, the rate payers will then have to pay for that, but the rate payers also got the benefit because if you spent it, you would have spent it on something that everybody needed, if you're not spending it on. So if you decided to say, yeah, you know, we've got seven and a half million dollars in. But we need a, we need a, a, a huge upgrade to our sewer treatment plan.
Just one follow-up, yes.
Yes.
So, I mean...
So you have two opportunities. You have, well, we collected that seven and a half million dollars upfront, you can do one of two things. Use that seven and a half million dollars to pay cash for it so you don't have to go out with long-term debt.
Mm-hmm.
Or you can go out and take long-term debt for it and, and, and working with your financial advisors, depending on the, the rates that you're receiving at that point in time, it may be beneficial to use that. And so, it, everybody gets a benefit because the people that join the sewer pay for their entrance fee. They're paying that. And so any other thing, and you spent that just on them, and they're paying that back. So they're even, they're part of the whole group now. So you're not losing out, it's not shifting a burden from a specific household to everybody.
Here's my concern, if, you know, when you see, in the private sector, when you see a deficit like this, you say, okay, you're not charging the right price for your services because you're not covering operating expenses, right? So for me, I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, they do a fine job, but it, it would, to me, it would be like, well, you know, do we need to raise the fees on sewer to show, you know, to show a positive amount on the operating income? And it's a long, I don't want to get into it tonight, but I'm just wondering if that's something that you have to look at.
We look at it, but you really need to adjust what is, can affect the, a commercial cash flow.
Yep.
To what really is being budgeted as, as part of when you're generating revenues. You need to charge the users sufficient fees to cover your operating expenses.
Right.
That's the recurring thing.
Right.
You could have, if you wanted to, say if everybody, if everybody paid upfront, so say the whole ten million dollars...
Seven twenty goes away. So let's say there's no more, there's no more special assessments on, on...
So if you said, everybody's gonna pay year one, so you don't, so you had a ten million dollar project to connect all these people, and you assessed them ten million dollars. Everybody comes in and writes you a twenty thousand dollar check, it's all paid for, you don't go out with long-term debt. So there's no principal payment.
Right.
There's no interest payment, so your operations don't change because you don't have to charge the users to pay for that debt service because the new, the entry fee for all these new people paid for it.
But you don't recognize that money, you recognize that money coming in as a one-time revenue, right? And then you don't have that, over time, the revenues fall by the amount of the potential.
Right, but that's if you use...
Right, so there's the adjustment.
Well, that's if you use the accrual basis to take a look at this, which you would in a commercial side.
Right.
But this isn't, what you look at is exactly that scenario I told you upfront, is that you got enough revenues in if everybody paid upfront.
Right.
So you didn't have to have any principal or interest. Principal is really your expense, okay, not depreciation. Because if you looked at it, you, from a, um, commercial side, you'd be looking at depreciation as, well, guess what? We need to make sure that we recover our depreciation with the rates.
Right, and depreciation's a non-cash expense and principal repay is a cash expense.
Right.
So if you look at it, okay, I mean, I shouldn't even go into this, it's just...
Yeah, it's got a...
Yeah, so I, I just have one question.
Okay.
Along those lines, so if the special assessments each year is six hundred and thirty-five thousand, but they're paying off basically seven and a quarter, then there's going to be a gap there, but with the operating expense and the current fees coming in that should cover that hundred thousand because each assessment has been put on a house, they'll typically live in it either twenty years and pay it off, or when they sell it, it'll get paid off sooner, so I presume that's the difference between that six thirty-five and seven twenty.
So if you took a look at the current, between, you know, what you expect to six thirty-five, well, that's current for next year. So if you look at last year's financial statements, you'd have to take a look at what was current prior year.
But I would think that each year, a little bit more...
Pretty much everybody pays that assessment, I don't think we have a lot of, uh, delinquents on that.
Yeah, the only time it would get paid would be you sell the house, so...
Right, and so that's the extra money that you...
So that's the extra hundred thousand.
Right.
So is that...
Well, it's not necessarily extra hundred thousand, I don't have, I'd have to take a look at last year's finances, but assuming they were the same rate.
Assuming there's a certain number that you paid each year that are turnover houses. Um, that amount is not excessive from what the operating expenses could cover, correct?
Right.
And that should go to a principal repay.
Yeah.
That should absolutely, I mean, we should have the discipline to take that money and throw it against the cost of that special assessment.
Right, and so if you take a look at your fund balance, you're gonna take a look at the budgetary basis and see what you have. But yeah, if, if all of a sudden you had an influx and everybody paid.
Yeah.
You'd want to have that discipline to put that into, in effect, almost a, a debt service fund.
Like a sinking fund.
A sinking, yeah.
Can we do that legally?
Well, you can do it, but you, you can't do it, they will still certify your free ca, uh, your, your retained earnings higher, but internally, you can keep that reserve. There's nothing that says you have to reduce your rates because you have this money in place because you already have a, a long-term liability that matches up with that long-term asset.
Okay.
Oh, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that you refinanced some debt last year, about ten million dollars worth of debt, uh, and that saved you a little over nine hundred thousand dollars of future cash outplays and about eight hundred thousand dollars from the economic value and the present value of those out-year payments. So excellent job taking advantage of, of that, that refunding, so, um, just wanted to mention that.
That's the end of that.
Yeah. And so, um, other than that, I can't, um, you, you have, um, a lot of minor funds that are shown in the, in the chapter in the combining funds, but they're all pretty much self-supporting. Uh, you don't have a lot of additional capital activity going on. Uh, you have, uh, some chapter ninety funds, you've got a, you know, a million plus of excess capital project funds that you expect to be paid down, so unless you're going out for additional borrowings or additional project. And what you'll find is that every year, your special revenue fund, your receipts reserve appropriations and similar funds, grant funds, et cetera, they're kind of recurring, self-supporting, don't need that. The detail's in the combining section in the back. Um, and other than that, um, I'm kind of, I think we hit all the high points of the financial statements, unless anybody else has any questions on that call.
Any other comments?
We're gonna go through the management letter?
Yeah.
Yep.
This one won't take as long.
Okay. That's good news.
Good news.
Gets better every year.
I know, we're way up today.
So, um, one of the things we, uh, put in here from last year is documentation of internal controls and sound practice. Uh, we started the process and Kyle went through with Mary and, and helped her document all the processes, et cetera. Made a, a great start on that, we're gonna continue to assist in getting that done. We'll give you another document to add on top of it, and Dawn's gonna pick that up, so I expect this thing to be, uh, incomplete by, uh, the end of this fiscal year. You're ahead of a lot of communities relative to this particular point, you have it in most.
So is the process documentation only on the financial function or is it operations and...
It's, it's, it's the financial function, uh, monitoring, your internal controls, et cetera. It's not an operational type of thing, it's not...
It's only financial?
It's only financial, so it's, uh, if you want to see how productive a particular department is, uh, different metrics. It's really financial from the standpoint of what's required. And it's, it starts off with, you know, the, you, you have a requirement for the federal funds to make sure that you have that documentation and in effect that you safeguard their assets. But it makes sense to extend that to everything that you do. Your systems have been good and in place, and we've audited that and we've documented that in our work papers for all these years. It's just not written down. And, and, and when you do fraud risk assessments, that needs to be, you know, you can evaluate different departments, different things, but you need to make sure that you have a monitoring process in place. That you periodically look at it every, every year, every year, saying, has something changed? Do we need to change, uh, our assessment or our controls to surrounding? What may not be material to the financial statements where we wouldn't, it wouldn't cause me to not sign the audit opinion and give a, a matter-of-fight report because of the magnitude of what you may be looking at. If you have a department that takes in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, well, we take a look at that qualitatively and say, all right, we may want to go and take a look at that particular department. And I think we're gonna be working with Chris, uh, on this year to see if there's other places we want to visit or make our suggestions to go take a look at that.
Um, I can't believe that the documentation on this is so unique from town to town, right? I mean.
Oh, no.
You don't have to reinvent the wheel on this, do you?
No, I mean, there's, eh, there's documentation for your software, the software comes up. So your documentation, please refer to this particular manual for how to process a payment. You know, but internally, how do you do it? What's the flow of information? What, you know, what requires Chris's signature, you know, at all level, the things like that to ensure this? Um, so it's just documented, we, we discussed the system in place, we documented, uh, audit work papers, flow charts, things like that. And then we designed our test to see if it was working as designed and as it's been doing. So you don't have that, the, the benchmark written down to say, okay, I can, I don't have to go through that process. This is what they say happens, then we go to test to make sure it happens. You should have that because that's important as part of the fraud risk assessment because you can see holes and gaps and, and processes and controls if they're written down sometimes.
I'm converted, I believe that. So, so we're at a status, we're, we're, my, my guess is with Dawn on board, we're gonna get this done this year?
That was the plan, when Jim and I talked about this, uh, last, last, last year. And we said, well, the, the perfect time is when we have a new director of finance on board after we get through the budget process. And then he could deep dive with folks from Powers and Sullivan to do that. It gives him more deep dive into our systems and, uh, you, you folks already have the, kind of, the template, so...
And so you have the template for what Mary was doing before, et cetera, that Chris, uh, that Kyle, I mean, had documented. And then we, like we said, we'll take a look at Dawn, you get a, and again, we didn't know it was Dawn at the time, but it was whoever was gonna be down there, that, you get a fresh look too. It's like, okay, let's take a look at what was done, let's take a look at another eye, set of eyes saying, okay, maybe we can improve on it, maybe we don't need to, whatever it is, and then we'll work with Dawn and Chris to finalize that as part of this year's audit in the spring when we come through and manage that. And I, and again, I expect this thing should be in good shape next year, and that was the plan. It's gonna be a, a, kind of, a two-year plan in order to get this accomplished.
And we'll use those as training documents too, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And, um, uh, next point, probably yet, automated permitting software, software, again, it's not a huge point. Uh, when, when Kyle was out reviewing that operation, uh, there's enough controls in here, in there to make sure of that, but it's really manual, it's really inefficient. Um, you could do more analytics with things that, um, are automated that more than whoever does that can do. But we were in testing it, we didn't find anything wrong, it's just an old process. So we're just suggesting that, you know, you, you take a look at that and get rid of, automate as much as you can. Take advantage of software, brace change, uh, and, uh...
And by the way, we have done that, so the, the system's in the process of outfitting installation. So by the time they come back next year, it'll be done.
Can we do it?
And then, we had mentioned before that the ambulance receivable is kind of just out there by itself. Last year, it brought back in, reconciled to the general ledger, activity posted, and you came up with a process, uh, that made sure that if you needed to evade something, that it went through the proper approvals based on dollars and who needs to take a look at it. So we were satisfied that that was corrected. Um, overall, I mean, you, you guys have been doing great relative to that. Uh, but right now, I think, uh, this year since, you know, this report used to be a lot thicker, and, and we still tested the same things.
Yeah.
And what we found is that what was a problem before, they eliminated, but we tested the same things again. And we found out, okay, it's continued for more than one year, so that's in place. Uh, and so I think now that, we're still gonna test it, but I think some of our focus may want to be on some other areas that may be of concern, um, that, you know, we'll go out and do some site visits and, and, you know, if we find things are working well and, and things are great, you won't see it in here. If you find things that need to be adjusted, we'll work with Chris to determine whether it makes sense from a practical standpoint. Always a cost benefit, anything that you do, you can't come up with a solution that says, add two clerks. You're not gonna add two clerks. We have to work within the budget to do that, so that's kind of our plan for this year. And we'll be sitting down in the next couple of months to, uh, to plan this year's audit.
So can I ask you a follow-up question to the ambulance receivables? In your opinion, what's best practice on collection of ambulance receivables, you know, on the other clients you have? Who's responsible? I, you know, for years, we really didn't know who was responsible, we didn't see it as the chief's job and...
Well, you have to assign someone that is responsible at some places, you know, give it to the collector or the treasurer. Some people give it to the chief, chief probably not the best person who will to, you know, collect money sometimes. Uh, it's really kind of an administration function, uh, and that can be in the accounting area, treasury, collecting. Obviously, what you need to look at is, whether you have the resources to go after that. You know, police details, you know, you, you go through those type of things, collecting those, and so it's more of... Again, this is getting into documenting your systems, and once you define that and you go through that particular process, you'll be able to do some resource analysis to say, oh, guess what? This people, this team could take on this particular responsibility to help collect that. You could also, I've seen a lot of places, outsource these.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And...
Which I think we've done, right?
Which we've done, yeah. We also had a very comprehensive meeting two months ago, month ago.
Yeah.
And, uh, we met with, um, our, our, our company that does the work and, um, we actually had a great, we had everyone on the table, Paul and Don and, uh, a bunch, and the chief and a bunch of other folks, and, um, it really was enlightening. And I think we, uh, it's interesting what the company's doing to, to incur, to increase its return for us. Uh, there's a whole lot of medical billing timing issues which are interesting, uh, but they're, they're trying to make that work better. You know, for, for example, auto accidents is a timing question and those kinds of things. Paul knowingly nods his head as someone in the medical billing industry. So, um, the, um, I think we're gonna, I think we, we actually drilled down, I think we're gonna put some new processes that, that involve the treasurer collector's office in, in some element of this. Uh, but it, uh, really, a large chunk of stuff, it turns out, it's V-Caps with Medicare and Medicaid, and there's nothing to do about those.
I know it's complex and we probably don't have the staff to handle it, so...
But we, we, I, I, I actually think that it's a very, it's, it's much more to final, it's really not as bad that, you know, there was some old stuff we kind of cleared away and, and, and some things are just not gonna, you know, unfortunately, there's a chunk of these that are just never collected. People die and, uh, unfortunately, um, uh, or they're from Maine and, and we think, well...
Not that we have anything against people from Maine.
No, 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 we like Maine. Uh, so, but we, 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 we really do have our arms around, which is nice. And, and Don, it's on his registry, it's on Paul's registry, and we've actually made some nice progress. Good. And Jim, and Jim and Kyle, the whole team have been great, you know, I say, hey, just take a look at this and, you know, it, it, the revolving files. Uh, we actually ramped those up a couple of years ago as a result of work we did, and I said, we should look at this, are we doing it right? Well, no. Here's best practice.
So what actions do we have to take to get this? So what actions do we have to take to get this off the management letter?
Oh, the automated permit, you, you're pretty much...
No, the receivable, the ambulance receivable.
Oh, it's already on.
It is on?
Yeah.
That's the last...
Yeah, it was formally adopted as an ambulance receiver, right off the, the ambulance user charge account was consistent. We were looking at that, not at the collection side. It was the accounting side of this that was deficient.
That was last year we...
That was last year as part of the point. But like Chris said, in response to the point from last year, we also looked at the whole system, saying, can we do this better? Can we develop new processes as we go through this?
Okay, so...
We're, we're clean right now. We're going to review the new system as it gets in place.
Okay, so the new system's what's going to take this?
Right, right, okay.
Gotcha.
Any other comments?
Thank you. Good work, Chris and Paul are in the financial team.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Sorry. Yeah, absolutely.
So next up is the fiscal year nineteen budget first round?
So, um, do you have the handout pieces too?
Yep.
So we're going to do this in two ways. I'm going to have some handouts. And I don't want to take one of... And then we're also going to show them up on the board so we can show people at home. So where the, you can actually just pop that up on the whole screen. That's all right, this is fine. I think there's a way to do it, actually. Don't worry about it. And can you? So, what we started to move to last year was a comprehensive budget document for the first time. We've always done kind of a line on the budgets, reports, and so we've put everything in one big book. And again, this was a, something Paul spearheaded last year. And it came out late in the process. So we decided to move it up and start earlier in the process. So we're going to talk a little bit tonight about some of the highlights. By the end, the governor's budget comes out tomorrow, we're going to make some adjustments based on that. And I don't think there'll be very major ones. And then we have a couple of things to polish, which we'll talk about. And we'll have the whole book out for all of you the other day, getting in next. And then we'll amend it again at the end of this process. Because right now, the school budget's not in here yet, the water budget's not in here yet, the sewer budget's not in here yet. So really, what we're going to start with is the, kind of the general overview. And the, and the town, town side. So, if you, so flip to what I think is, we have another summary page, which is, ooh. Just keep scrolling down a little bit and I'll show you when to stop. There you go. Did we distribute this as far as I can go? Okay, so, so stop for a second. So the, the budget, this, this book is going to, has a ton of materials which I can get in the box in front of me yet. There, there's a basic overview which we're going to skip through right now. And then the board selective budget message, the budget summary, there's a bunch of charts and graphs. Keep going, scanning. There's also, every depart, all the departments come through here, it's kind of the summaries of all their, what they do. And then a big giant appendix, which has a ton of information. So, um, this is the citizen's guide, we're going to do that. And then the next page is, so, so this all describes, describes the budget process, what it is all about, how it works. I think it's been a great, it was a great tool last year. The org chart, which is in the CAFR, by the way, I say Mark tried to say CAFR. All the boards and committees, we'll place them, how they go.
That's great.
And here's a committee profile, so... Was it make copies? So, this is kind of a snapshot of a little bit of Cohasset. So it talks about what we are. And if you scroll down to the bottom of this page, there's a little box, which is on this page. You see, it's not the one, it's this one. It says facts and taxes. So it's just a little quick snapshot of some things about the town, which are kind of interesting to note. The current population based on the town census, the town census, the town census. Some other interesting statistics. What are average and median values, the tax bills are. And I think it's interesting to note how much of a distance there is now between the average and the median. Median is half above, half below. Average is, you know, the, the average. So there's almost a 200, there's more than a $200,000 gap between them. And there's also, there's a $2,600 difference between the median tax bill and the average tax bill. The median tax bill is actually less than $5,000. The average is 12, 275. And that's just, that's testament to the fact that there are more properties at the very high end which are starting to pull that number further and further. Which has been great for the growth, by the way. But it's one of the reasons that the median and the average are have pulled apart a fair amount. So, if you keep going, we'll actually get the budget summary. So this is a selective budget summary and underpendent managers. So, well, we'll just revert to the handout, scroll through this whole thing. The, there's, the basic highlights are caught up in the, typed in the charts and graphs. Really a great way, I think, to look at documents. The proposed general base is 46,316,833. Eighty-three percent of our budget count are revenue and cost of property taxes. Of which 93% of that is residential and 7% commercial. Eight percent are local receipts, 7% state and 2% from a variety of other things. Where does it go? Forty-two percent directly to the schools, 26% on the town side, and 27% is shared. And the shared is split between the two. And there's also some smaller immissalities announced to go to state local assessments. We have chunks of capital and some transfers.
Chris, just, just on the, sorry.
Sure.
I don't want to belabor any of this, but just the school budget or the budget percentages, is that just budget divided by total budget?
Yes.
Because obviously, the budget is built very differently.
Correct. This just shows where the tax, the ta, the core revenue of the town goes. Now, again, a big chunk of the shared budget really is dedicated to schools. There's a chunk of the town side budget that goes to schools as well.
Shared, as you talk, line stuff that we use to do the appropriate budget.
Healthcare, insurance, assurances.
Benefit buildings, debt service.
Yeah, yeah, debt service, all of that, which is shared. Actually, it's, I have, a lot of it is school related, actually, because they have more employees. So this is a, a chart that's up there now is, is our new growth number. So you can see, we actually, it's kind of, it goes up and down. What's been really, and the low-range planning committee's taken a real look at how, how to deep dive and how to kind of get a projection of what's coming. So what's happened in seventeen and eighteen is we had two really, really big years, in fact. They were the biggest years since the Avalon project. And the, what, you can also see that we're, they started to come down in eighteen. We expected it to come down further for next year. The toll and Avalon, the toll and hook projects accelerated today. I think they went from, as you all know, many, many, many years, they've accelerated to the end. Almost done. There is the James Lane project, which is still ongoing. That has been fully captured. And there are still rebuilds. There are still tearing and rebuilds, which is 10 to 15, I think, 20, I think was about the number we were looking at right here, I think, new home constructions in town. Which is not 100% new growth, by the way, it's net new growth.
We've been averaging 14 new homes.
Just, just a suggestion, and you may have already had it in here, it's just a glossary, you know, so that people understand what a term like new growth actually means.
Well, there is, so the back of the, in this document, which you don't have right in front of you right now, that's a gigantic, there's a 25-page glossary.
Beautiful, thank you.
Which is every term you can possibly imagine, including this one, I think, that's all.
I hope so.
In case you have no life.
We're on the mind next time.
It's all there. You can learn as you want to.
Somebody will find what's missing, I guarantee you.
The next big component is motor vehicle excise. And again, I'm not going to read all of my commentary, you can read this on your own. And you can see it's a little, it was low, it's gone up, but it's not the, it's kind of a variable. It's a variable thing. It's, it's kind of hard to, we, we have no control over it, obviously. If people buy cars, it's great. If they don't, they don't. Leasing's become more prominent, but you don't know, we don't know what kind of cycle people are in. A one year, two year, three year. It went up last year after being flat for two. This year, it's been stable. It hasn't gone up or down. But I think, as Steve pointed out a couple of years ago, and that we've all seen as well, Kevin and I, it's after the presentation of Maya, I think, a few years ago as well, down the road, and we don't know exactly when it's coming, you know, self-driving cars and shared vehicles. And, you know, what will that mean to this? Well, it's an excellent question, but it's going to affect everybody.
Means we're going to have to raise the excise tax level enormously.
That's a state, that's a state. I don't want to talk about that.
I'm kidding.
If we keep scrolling, the next big number, the next big chart. Again, I think this is a, a good way of looking at things, it's just very visionary. Chapter 70, as you can see, there was a big spike when the state came out of the recession. And it's been kind of stable, you know. We really haven't had any, any, any real increases, any substantial increases. They've all been, you know, $10,000, $10 a student is great, but that means $16,000 for classes. We have 600 students roughly. The next, the next chart shows unrestricted aid. Now, that looks rather more dramatic, but this is also on a chart that caps at 500,000 as opposed to what it caps at 3 million. Unrestricted aid back in 2008 was $640,000. And now it's dollars per inch, 520. So there was a big whack at this after the recession, and it's not recovered. That said, the governor did pledge at the MMA conference this past week to increase this by the amount of tax collections that are budgeted, which is 30%. So that means we'll see about a $17,000 potential increase, which is good. I mean, it's not, it's not going to change the world, but it's good that they, they state that the Baker administration's been very stable about this, they've committed. And they said that if there was a downturn, we will not go after and call this back.
And the, the finances from the state revenues have been solid from the last 12 months. So from that point of view, I think these 300 is almost guaranteed.
So those are the big, those are the big revenues. The, the next big set of things we looked at is our expenses. And again, I'm not going to read all of the narrative, which I think is good. And please read it and comment on it and give me comments back. The health insurance number, we've done a lot of work to contain it this past year. We did a, we, we really implemented, we took to another level our implementation of Maya safety protocols. As a result, we saved $28,000 in premiums by hitting benchmarks, best practices, trainings. That was the biggest number we've ever received. It's eight times as big as it was just four years ago. So we've really had a big dramatic increase. We've also reduced our increase, and it's hard to, you know, once you get big, it's, you know, it's over a $5,000 number. And by the way, this has not been, the past year showed the teachers. So we made this a standardized chart, doesn't leap up anymore. So this, this includes the, the teachers joined the town system two years ago. You don't see this, that big giant leap anymore, so we include all that. There was a, there was a premium increase, it was a little bit bigger.
Yep.
By the way, the current estimated average increase this year is 4.6% for the, so we won't get that number till next month.
Right.
Our fingers crossed that we'll be in a good place. We have, though, reduced the rate of increase by 50%. We were almost at 10. We're down below 5 last year. So it's still a big number, but we've kind of bent the curve. And some of the things that have been done with the wellness program, we get Paul and Jen and a bunch, and a bunch of folks have really been very big on the whole wellness. And we have people who are doing weight watchers, we have people who are doing stretches, strength. We have folks that have done healthy cooking classes, smart shopping. It's really, and we also have a beginning, the workforce is starting to get a little younger, which, so it's, it's reduced some of our claims.
And it's just important to add that all of those programs give us points and discounts, so...
The partnership with Maya, it's a, it's a government, you know, since it's a pool of 130 governments, we're all in it together. Diane actually serves on the health trust board, and I'm now on the advisory committee for the Maya, the insurance program. It's a great place to pass back information. For example, you know, all of us have to take the state ethics test. And you go online and it's a, you know, it's a basically, it's a pass, pass, right? They, they teach you when you go through, and then you get a certificate. Well, we, we like to do a lot of live trainings, but there might be some training that we like to do on harassment and things. We can't get always everyone in the room. So maybe the, the overnight shift at the police station can, can do it online. And so Maya, I think, is looking to do some of those kind of programs with us because it's going to help all members. So some kind of an online training that people can do on their own time. They have to validate they did it. It would allow us to reach people who we can't otherwise get to, because you never get every employee in the room at the same time.
So every year, do they, do they do a demographic profile of us to set the claim rate, or is there...
Yeah, there's a constant look. It's a, it's a, we go back two years plus the year we're in. And they, they look at our loss ratios, basically. And we, we actually meet regularly when we're with us. So I, I actually, we talked about that. Some, some people haven't looked at it. I'm like, it's become a regular annual event, we said we're having a look at loss ratios. Which is, you know, I mean, we look at some of the cases, we don't have names attached to them. Every once in a while, you have a big claim. And we're shielded from the full impact of it, but they still ride with us for at least two, two...
And get spread out over three years.
Yeah, so, so things have been better. I mean, you know, and, and some of the work we're trying to do, what Maya's trying to do with the healthy wellness programs are, they have more chronic things like high blood pressure and diabetes and arthritis.
Right, I was, one of the things I learned was that 60% of all the medical claims for Maya and also nationally are for musculoskeletal things. So, you know, shoulders, back pain. And so they're really working on, you know, how you sit in the workplace. And, you know, can you offer incentives to get good chairs or good seating ranges that get people walking or riding bikes like you did, so. Just, just one other thing just to add is, and not on Maya, but there was a Globe article, I think it was yesterday, about the GIC, which was the plan our teachers, our retired teachers were in. And I think we were in at one point. And they just got rid of three of their healthcare plans. So they're like 65% or 70% of their, the GIC members are going to have to leave the healthcare plan they're in and find another one. So that's a big, you know, big drama.
So we're stable. Blue Cross Blue Shield is underlying, provided for our medical. And they told me, the folks I met with at MMA last week, that they've been negotiating heavily on drug prices. So we'll see what happens in the rate of this. I mean, it, it behooves them to do that, right? And they have, they have leverage that we never could have in the industry. The next chart shows the OPEB trust fund. And as we talked about just before, it shows a pretty, pretty big, you know, the town has made some real commitments. We have a long way to go, but the line is really going in the right direction. And because it's been invested fairly aggressively, there's been a fairly good return.
When we're on the OPEB, when we're at one point going through, I know we're going to recharge and relook at the committee. But I would seem to me that we should ask them to produce, you know, take us where we are now and then produce a long-range plan that was talked about earlier. Whether maybe 25, 30, 35 years, whatever, whatever the number ends up being. What would be a realistic plan whereby we could make a contribution that we can live with? Five, six, seven, eight, whatever it is, the number is. And then have that plan, it'll probably go out 30 years or so. But we at least have that plan and then just follow it every year. I think that that's exactly what our auditor was telling us, it's just good and prudent to do something. Can't we, we discussed this before, why don't we do that?
We do have a charge for the committee.
Yep.
It is recharged. I don't know if it's repopulated.
Yeah, we just need more applications.
We, we, it, it's, it's, it's coming. So, and by the way, Don's reached out to Norfolk County to start the conversation with them as well.
So that kind of plan is coming whereby they'll develop, we'll assess. Well, beyond the analysis, let's have a plan to pay this off.
I think, I think it's a, I'm sorry.
The committee's charge includes that. But it, it was actually expanded to look at all folks' employment benefits as opposed to just healthcare.
So maybe what we've got to do is repopulate it and then have a specific discussion with them on some of these, some of these things, and really follow through on it. Because it's, again, it's a doable thing, it's very long range, but let's at least look at the raw numbers.
I think they're ready to go, we should have...
Yeah, let's do it.
We've got to get it on an agenda and bring whoever's left on it in. Bring them in.
All right, it's on the list.
Yep.
Pension, which we just talked about, did spike a little bit this past cycle. Now it's next year. That's a cost that's growing rather rapidly as well. And part of it is because the underlying, the, it was 50% or less coverage in the fund. Now, that's up over 60 now, which is better, but that's still a long way from 90, which you probably should be at. Pension systems are rarely getting up to 100. If you get over 100, you can be overfunded. Doesn't happen much anymore. The nice thing, the thing about a pension that's easier is that in Massachusetts, only the first $30,000 is variable. After that, any, any pension dollar over that is fixed for, for life. After that, any, any pension dollar over that is fixed for, for life, so it's a lot easier to, you know what the numbers are gonna be, you know what the changes are gonna be. Uh, and you know what the covered lives are gonna be, providing people get their ten years and retire from the system.
So, this roughly million dollar increase over the la- over, it's projected to nineteen, is that a result of, um, changes in Norfolk County policy, or is that us having more people retire?
Every two years, yeah, every two years, they, they, they reset, uh, their, their assessments. We went up. Uh, we, I'm not, so we're gonna continue to explore some of how they calculate that, and that's part of the conversation we need to have. And this year, flat, you know, the, the increase is back to a more reasonable, comparatively reasonable level. Uh, we'll see what happens in the next, in the next round. And then, um, the, the next couple, uh, slides, I think, are kind of illuminating, and he's talking about the policies. So, this band shows, uh, the, the free cash in, in the policy, the green being the top goal, and the, the red being the bottom goal, so that band is where we wanna hit. And you can see that five of the last six years, we've hit really right at or near it, the one spike last year had to do with it, as we've talked about, a number of tax titles and closures that came out. So, otherwise, we've been kind of right in that range, which is pretty good, that's the target we're trying to hit. And the, and the good news is that if you turn to the next slide, um, you will see, oh, the next graph. We have reached our stabilization fund, uh, goal, uh, now, so we, we're just slightly above it, and as Jim also just talked about. So, um, we were, we, this is a big climb, you can see where the town was in two thousand twelve, less than a million dollars, bucks in the bank, and now we're over five. So, um, at this point, there are other investments, uh, to your point, Kevin, and, uh, that we might be able to start pivoting some of these, the, the extra funds we have, more and more into OPEB, uh, as we close out the year and use those resources to do that. We've been committing, and we've been doing, if we have healthcare savings, that free back, a element of free cash gets put back in, uh, to the OPEB fund at the end of the year, so. So, I, I want to pivot to another se- other section, but I think you now have a, and if I have, now I have Paul to talk about. These are, um, these are the, the, the pieces that I think are displayed a lot better than what we do, much better than we ever did, not just numbers.
Okay.
These are department summaries.
Almost like a one percent decrease.
Who's going?
We'll get to those in a second. That's Don's turn.
Just longer hours.
At ten cents an hour is really, that's a budget buster.
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about, um, some of the things that we're updating from year to year. Um, community profile obviously is, is one of those. The original came from the CAFRA, it'd be consistent, but it's got dates and numbers for populations and stuff like that. So, what I did is went through and made sure that we, we updated all that kind of stuff. Um, and on the bottom of that community profile page, that's the one that I'm looking at now, now, the numbers, the.
Yeah, we looked at that actually, but one of yours, it's sunk out before, and so.
Oh, you already did that? All right. So, did you look at the, uh, the facilities, the cemetery, the treasures?
No, 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 I haven't done any of those.
Well, the other, the piece of it, um, beyond the community profile maintained and that stuff, is, um, all the departments. The, the main goal of, of that, I think, is to, to let people know what's involved. I mean, I know myself, when I was first elected as a treasure collector, I really didn't have any idea of the breadth or the depth of, of everything that goes on. And it's probably even, it's compounded even more with the small town, and we all tend to wear a bunch of hats. Um, and with treasure collector, it's at least easy to start with, is the treasurer hat with all those duties, and then the collector with all those duties. But even that, there's more payroll is another whole profession in and of itself that's taken care of through my office as well as, um, benefits. And, you know, a couple of years ago, I was appointed tax custodian, so there's another bunch of laws and stuff you need to, to learn with, all that kind of stuff. Um, but in the beginning, we have the mission statement, and we have the, all of these programs and services which goes into a lot of the different hats that, that, that people wear it, um, which I think is, is helpful for those who don't know, and, I mean, you folks obviously are, are involved, and probably have a, a much deeper knowledge of what we're talking about here. But, um, maybe others don't or need to be, uh, be reminded. But it also lists, um, a lot of the major accomplishments for each individual year, and then the goals for the next year, so you get a feel for what you're paying for with your, um, tax dollars. And, um, what we expect, um, to deliver again the following year. And then if there's any changes with that, um, sometimes there's big changes in the staffing level or the budget, for some reason, things that get to, to move around, or changes in priorities, for whatever reason, we address that. Um, one of the departments I did a little bit of a deep dive on this year was, um, facilities, because that's another one that, that I had no idea that the, the breadth and depth that was going on. You think it's a bunch of buildings, and, you know, they're just going to take care of everything, but there's a lot really involved in that. Um, I just listed out all the different, um, buildings, there's, um, there's eleven different buildings. Um, which in and of itself is kind of a big task.
A big man.
But the, you have one manager, four full-time people, and three part-time employees. But east within all those buildings, you have a, a whole bunch of different systems, and they all need to be inspected and, and retained, and filters changed, and belts changed, and all kinds of cleaning, and record-keeping, and there's compliance, which I had no idea, it's a lot of state regulations.
So, it's a reason why we don't have the water department in the facilities chart?
It's a separate section, the enterprise one's a separate piece.
Enterprise will be sep- uh, gonna be separate.
And they'll have their own set of priorities and accomplishments and everything as well.
No, they'll be in here. They just, they're, they're on a slightly different lag on their budget at the moment, but you'll see that.
There is, yeah. In addition to that, there's a whole bunch of different duties that, you know, just the custodial aspect of it, setting up for all kind, different kinds of meetings and things like that. Um, so what we're trying to do is just kind of highlight, and, and make these people understand what, what it is that each of the departments are doing. Um, they, a lot of them deal with a bunch of boards and committees, the relationship varies. I mean, some, some of the departments are accountable to the boards directly, and others it's more of a, a working relationship. Um, so this document will help get, the departments get into, to that kind of thing. Um, and then there's always major projects that go on that don't necessarily happen from year to year. I mean, with facilities, there was an awful lot with security this year, the, the ballers out in, in, um, the middle school, high school, and, um, security, um, monitoring at the, uh, Joseph Osmond School. And, you know, um, and then there was the internal blocks, the, the, the walls or something that they have in there to keep people out of certain areas when it's being used. So, there's an awful lot of security going on this year. But then you have un- unintended, um, events, like when the, the cupola came off this building, they had to address that always, as well as the, just dealing with the ice and the snow. So, this gives you some idea of, um, what each of the departments have to deal with. What we're adding this year, and this was private request, we haven't done it yet, but we are doing it this year, is, is putting in the departmental budget numbers and the departmental FTEs, the full-time equivalents. So, it gives you like a, a better aspect, that you get everything that they're doing, what they're spending, and how you, what's kind of staff they have, and you can see that trend over time. So, there, you've got like a nice little packet of, of what the department is all about, and we'll probably add additional pieces to that, um, as we go forward. But that's the big chunk that, um, Don and I gotta add this year. Any big questions on the question?
This ends up being a, a book, which is published when?
So, uh, the first cut of it will be, uh, probably the, the end of this week or the beginning of next, it'll be electronic, and it will get printed copies for anyone who wants a hard copy. Um, and it'll have all of this stuff to review and look at. Uh, and then we'll update it as the cycle goes on, we add the water budget, the sewer budget, the school budget. So, and then obviously, any amendments that are made during the process will be incorporated, so that when the budget process is complete at the end of March, a complete document will be up for all the residents to work with as well. I mean, this will be available as well publicly, uh, with it, so, you know, a month before town meeting, everyone can go through this document.
So, do we have copies, the whole thing will be completed somewhere around, uh, April first, it sounds like?
Yeah, that's when, that's when the whole budget process ends.
Right, yeah.
So, the first cut of it, with last year, that's when, that's when this came out, it's the very end of the process. We decided to accelerate it this year, to get at least the town piece out early, so it can be part of the advisory committee's review and for everyone else to look at. And I think it has an educational component to it as well.
Yeah.
Um, and then, again, we'll pick up the other budgets as they come, so.
Very good.
Thank you, Paul. The next piece, uh, just to, to touch on are now numbers, and a new piece of the, of this will be unveiled this year, uh, for the first time that Don has been working on.
I guess if you want to just jump down to the debt section, this is just another section that we have added in this year.
Page seventy-seven.
To actually receive the, uh, budget award, debt is required to be in there separately discussed and have certain grammar. Is that the, the back page of the, uh, community profile?
This is, it's not even in school yet, as this was last year, so just.
So, if you just continue to scroll through here, basically, the first section of the debt service area discusses the general fund, um, debt service for nineteen, what was proposed. Um, FY eighteen budget and FY seventeen actual. Again, this is a parameter that needs to be in there for, um, all revenues and expenditures to be able to achieve the award for the budget document. Um, so essentially, what Paul was mentioning before, in the different, uh, departmental areas, we will be seeing something like this schedule in for each department. Um, so this explains the general fund debt service here. Uh, and, and within the accounting structure in our, our software system, it's broken down into the different types of, of debt that's paid out of the general fund, which is non-excluded debt, which is tax-supported debt, capital-funded debt, which is essentially transferred from capital stabilization to pay for that debt service, and then finally excluded debt service. And from eighteen to nineteen, decrease of about four hundred and forty-eight thousand of general fund debt service. And for the most part, that is the excluded debt piece, as I believe the Osmond School is now off the debt schedule as of nineteen, and that is continuing to drop.
So, what's left on that? Just, uh, the, uh, high school?
I believe, no, there's a few other pieces, uh, straight pawn is Central Sewer, was an excluded debt project that's still out there. Um, they actually just, we'll get into some of the numbers, but I, I broke that out, um, in another section, which I actually don't have, so.
You'll see that in the budget.
We'll get there.
And then, uh, as we keep moving down, uh, talks about statutory debt limit, which is basically, you take the town's equalized valuation, which is the, the town's all assessed value, and then five percent of that is the debt limit that the town can actually borrow. Now, based on two thousand seventeen number from the DOR, um, that number was two point seven billion. Based on five percent, our debt limit is one hundred, one hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. And as of June thirtieth seventeen, our total outstanding debt principal was fifty-one million, so we're well below that debt limit.
Don, just a question.
Sure.
Um, when you use those numbers, fifty-one million or a limit of one hundred and thirty-seven million, is that a principal and interest calculation, or is that a principal outstanding?
Principal outstanding only, and that is gross. So, when we look into debt service, we have MWP, well, now, Mass Clean Water Trust subsidized loans. That is gross number, uh, because really, the town is responsible for the total principal outstanding. Even though we get a subsidy each year, if for some reason, Mass Clean Water Trust didn't have the funds to subsidize us, we'd be on the hook for the whole amount.
So, the fifty-one million dollar number that you just pointed out, it includes MWPAT or not?
Does not include its subsidy. It does include, that includes all debt service principal as of June thirtieth seventeen.
Including MWPAT, but not interest?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
I don't know, this class is worth two point seven billion dollars, so.
Yeah. Uh, and then, uh, the next section talks about debt policy limits, which, um, back in May of two thousand sixteen, before his election, we adopted, uh, debt policy. And basically, that policy states that the net general fund debt, the tax-supported debt, should not exceed ten percent of total revenues. And based on my calculation, the copy that I sent out is highlighted with four percent, it's actually two point six percent. Well under our, our, um, policy. And then I also added in here, um, discussion about the bond rating. Uh, when we issued debt back in June twenty seventeen, uh, Stan and Pores did their rating analysis, and, um, I just pulled some information out of that to discuss and, and, uh, pulled a couple of quotes out of there to just see how the bond rating and where we're at is affecting our, our debt. And then the last portion gets down to actual debt service, which takes into account everything from general fund, excluded, non-excluded, uh, water and sewer debt, which are these, these charts here. And so what, what this shows to me, excluded debt, twenty twenty-four is gonna be our last payment. I believe that there's a lot of room for, for potential big projects down the road. And then this is just another supporting schedule, which, if you're not a chart person, this gives you the real numbers behind everything. And now, Steve, this is, this is actual debt service that we have to pay. So, within that excluded debt to a non-excluded, this is net of any subsidy we receive from, uh, the Clean Water Trust.
Okay.
And it includes interest?
And, and interest, correct.
Full service, yeah, the debt, yeah.
Yep. And when you look at total debt as of eighteen, um, is about fifty million dollars, and half of that is water, another quarter almost is sewer. So, really, the general fund's debt is in a reasonable place, and we have.
It always has been.
Yeah, I mean, I think the town's pretty lucky to be in a position that, that we're in. So, this, I mean, this will probably be expanded upon, you know, year after year. This, I think, essentially should take into account anything we need for the budget award, um, that Paul and I discuss. Each, each year, they, they kind of look for more and more once you get the award, so I, I think this should, and we'll double check, we're going through the checklist that this does meet the requirements. But maybe then down the road, we'll add more sections that need to be within the debt area.
So, there's two purposes to this one, it's just because it's, it's a good thing to do, it's very illuminating, it puts everything at, at your fingertips or at your mouse, or your finger, uh, with tablets these days.
Or your eyes.
Uh, or your eyes. The, the other goal, and, and also it adds a lot of graphical material, it's not just a bunch of lines. A lot of narratives explains where it all goes to. Again, I think, for example, the work that Paula did with, with, with Mark, for example. It's al- it, it actually helps explain exactly what the facilities do, a- 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 in a way that, that goes beyond the numbers, it's like, well, what does it do? Well, there's all these inspections, all of these things, here are the buildings, here are some of the projects. And I, we'd like to have pictures, by the way, down the road, we're not gonna get too crazy this year, but we'd like to do some of that with capital. The next big piece is to add the capital budget into this, and I'll probably, we'll come next year with more documentation on the projects, I think it'd be. The other is that, um, just like the CAFRA, there's an award for this, so we'd like to get to award standards, um, because it's, it's, it's a, it's a good thing to do. But then we'll see where we go, and then probably next year, to see if we can't get this in for an award. The most important thing is that it's helpful for, for the community, and to, and to all of the members of awards and committees who can look at this. And I, it puts everything in one place, everything from the policies to narratives to graphs and charts and numbers. This doesn't have a line on a budget, I mean, there's, there, if we put the line on a budget in here, it would be another hundred pages.
Right.
Um, and tho- those will be discussed, obviously, you know, uh, you, we'll, we'll supply the board anything and the assess, and the, uh, advisory committee anything it wants to look at. There's a more, a little more higher-end roll-up, uh, for what this is. Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm sorry, the long-term debt's up here, and I appreciate, Don, you segregating the resource that is responsible for the principal and interest payments. But I wanted to clarify, regardless of whether or not it comes from the capital fund, CPA, water or sewer, these are general obligation debts of the town.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments? We will be deep diving much more into this, and, um, you will have a whole, a whole big fat packet in the next, uh, you know, in the coming weeks, uh, which we'll be able to use throughout the budget process, so.
It'll be this book all completed.
Yeah, the whole, all hundred and thirty-five pages, again, I'd say it's probably.
And that'll contain these pages, we've seen.
Yeah, and they're just examples, uh, right. Um, again, with, with the, without sewer, water and schools, those will be added as we go.
As we go.
But there's all glossary.
We'll get this digitally, digitally.
Yeah, it's all be electronic. Uh, and it'll also be up on the website, so anyone can go and look at it. I know the folks at Capital liked it in hard copy, I, I'm sorry, in advisory, and I'm, I'm happy to provide it in a book, if anyone wants it that way, too. If any of you want it, support it loosely, binder, we can do that, too. Sometimes even, I don't know, here, or, you know, we go old school, and it's just, you know, sometimes you just need a piece of paper, and you have to scribble on it, and you need to be able to write on it, so. This is the, the first time, I, I.
Great.
There's been a, as part of, of the budget process this year, we met with all, everyone had to get their numbers in December. We, we met the first school week of January, which is kind of a scramble after the blizzard, uh, and we met all week long. We invited folks from the advisory committees, where liaisons could come to attend, we had some very good conversations with departments, um, and I think. We had some very good conversation with departments, and I think as we go through, we've been talking about some of the, you know, the aspects of the budget that are kind of, that are interesting. They're all interesting. I think this will give us an ability to look at it and hold it for a while and ask different questions. There'll be a lot of questions, if you have any questions down, we're here, we're here, happy to ask, but answer them, there'll definitely be more.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Chris. I've asked for a motion to change the agenda, put the additional committee appointments ahead of Town Hall Building Committee update.
Second.
So move.
Sorry.
On paper? We're just trying to get you guys out here, the ones that are potentially here for appointments. So next up is Town Hall Building Committee update.
Yes. Appointments.
We're going to try to do the appointments first, so why don't you want to just introduce the folks that are potentially here?
Where would you like them?
Right in front.
Okay.
So just come on up front and just introduce yourself.
No, you come up. No, you. So Ted Lubitz is here, and Wayne Satchak? Yeah, please.
Well, you passed the first test.
Not a chair.
So Wayne, as you know, has been involved and very interested in the process since the beginning. We were sensitive to the fact that at the initial, at the conception of the committee with Chris, Dave Dreinen was the co-chair and involved in real estate, and once he was left town, that was a big, it was a bit of a hole that we had to fill. So both of the candidates who spent the extra time waiting, thank you, and submitted applications, I understand, are involved in real estate. Ted is involved in Boston Real Estate, and he can tell you a little bit more about that, and I think Wayne needs no interruption, probably.
Best of all.
Yeah, so Ted Lubitz, I live at one oh three Porter Street, I was born and raised actually in Cohasset. Moved back about four years ago, I grew up on Red Gate Lane. I am a real estate developer, I recently started my own business, I guess September first. Prior to that, I've been doing real estate development in and around Massachusetts. Most notably, I was just working on a project in downtown Boston, that was a two hundred and thirty million dollar ground-up development over ninety-three South. So I've been far involved in very large-scale projects. I've got an extreme interest in Town Hall project, just giving my proximity to it and my involvement in real estate, so.
Excellent. Particularly that you can potentially come on board, that's true. I've been on different committees, as you probably saw, and I, I don't have a resume, because I've never applied for a job. So I didn't want to start now.
You're a creator.
I've always worked for myself and, and my family and, and different partners that I've had over the years. I'm a lifelong resident of Cohasset, and I've done it unjustly by every committee, and I've never applied, nor do I want to apply for a selectman seat, because I think you have the toughest job in the whole town.
But you can't apply for it.
Thank you. So I've done everything, can do everything, and I'm very interested in this project. I think there's some, some things that we can do that can make it a terrific, a terrific asset to the, to the town going forward.
And are there any others that are, have applied?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So we're looking for two folks to commit to the new Town Hall Building Committee, the new name, formerly called Thrack. And I asked for any questions from the board to the two senators.
Ted, your, your engagement with, I don't want to simplify by saying project management, but basically, is that, was that the starting point for you, was it project management?
Uh, no, you, you mean professionally?
Professionally.
No, out of college, I started with a company called First Atlantic Capital, which essentially is a, we were an operator for a private equity group of buying properties throughout, quite frankly, the country. And then I actually also, from there, I went back and got a master's in real estate development command T. So I did that program, and then from there, I went to work for Boston Financial Investment Management Company, which is a tax credit syndicator in Boston, so investing and developing affordable housing. And then from there, I took over and led the Affordable Workforce Platform for Related Beal, one of sort of the Boston office of related companies, which is probably the largest developer in the country. So I was a vice president there, and responsible, like I said, for, for a project that is wrapping up right now.
So when this project is eventually completed, you're kind of passionate for going right over to the affordable housing.
Stole my line.
I, I could be a persistence.
Think about it.
No, thank you. And I know I shouldn't even have to ask, but are you, are you actively developing still, Wayne?
Me?
Yeah. You?
Very slowly. I, I, I'm one of these people that buys things and holds onto it for a very long time. So I still own the Samuel Bates House, and I still plan on doing something there. I bought it in two thousand and five, I applied for the first permit in two thousand and five, and I'm still applying for permits, so. I guess you could say I'm developing. I do have some land that we could put the affordable housing on when this project is finished, and I'd be happy to partner with someone like this that lives on Porter Street, and I live on Beechwood Street, so this would be a good combination.
Yeah, maybe we'll just change the name of this committee when they're done.
Special deal for the town, Wayne?
Absolutely, absolutely. So to answer your question, I didn't want to put developing out, because a developer sometimes is sort of a bad word. But in the past, I've developed, I did Wheelwright Farm Condominations, I did Riverview Drive, I did Seventy-Nine Way of the Avenue, I've done some projects, but they were all in the eighties and nineties, not two thousand and seventeen.
No, it's, I mean, the mechanics, there are certain, there are smaller elements along the fringes that will change with respect to tax consideration and the like. But the concept of, of going from objectives to end product, I don't think changes all of that much. And having, you know, having the experience of people who have done it is, is nothing but a benefit to us, so.
And, and I guess the other thing I put out, I've worked on about two hundred projects, when I owned an environmental firm that did twenty-five million a year, and had two hundred employees, and, and it was almost all prevailing wage jobs, almost all working for general contractors, almost all under the gun to get asbestos removed and different things like that, so that the projects go on. So I worked for the federal government, the state government, local governments, and I had a lot to do with, you know, working with unions and working with prevailing wages and stuff like that, like I said. So I think I'm suited to do this job very nicely, in terms of, you know, I like to go to the construction meetings, I like to take the notes, I like to, you know, keep contractors online and have them deliver what they promise and the deadlines that they promised it in, and, and pay them timely so that there's no, and take care of any, any, anything. You know, for everything you charge extra, you can usually get a credit for something that they don't do and don't want to do. So when a project comes out, it really should be very, very close to what the bid was, and not the fifteen percent they have to set aside for contingency. And I like to, you know, not automatically say that you're going to spend that going into a job, and I think you're probably going to find the same thing. You have to keep the contractors in line to do what it is that they were hired to do, and make it, you know, all the time, so.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so Ted, you weren't a project manager, you were more like a promoter? You put the package together, is that what you did?
So.
Same for like the last project you did.
Yeah, so it's identifying sites, entitling sites, doing the due diligence, putting the team together, managing the process, you know, hiring all the roles responsible to, pretty much as a developer, you're really assembling a team and then managing that team. So that was my role, is as a developer, who was sort of hiring the architect, hiring the general contractor, having the owner's seat at the table. So, you know, that, that's what I did, it's going to the ZBA, it's sort of presenting the project, saying that, you know, we need a variance for the following reasons, and sort of bring, creating the value in building the property, so.
And you were responsible for delivering the project?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yep.
So you participated in working actually with architects and construction people to, to do the, to design the building and build it?
Yeah.
You know, it was, because we're talking about building, buildings here and building. You say you've had sort of hands-on experience with that?
Yeah.
Beyond just overseeing and.
About fifteen years, yeah.
Yeah, you've been hands-on in terms of doing those things?
Yep, and I, to, to the same point, I started my own business in September to, to continue to do it, so.
And has the chair, has the committee talked with the applicants and reviewed what it is to be on the committee? Or do you have a view on this?
So Ted and I had a, we had a long and honest conversation about everything that's involved here, and then was hopefully involved in the next two years, right? This will be a project that hopefully keeps moving and, and then comes to completion, but it's a significant amount of time, so I think he fully understands, and Wayne knows the drill, so.
You're, you're comfortable with the applicants then?
Very much, yeah.
The only question I have is if either of you have any experience in historical restoration or restoration of building projects?
I do, yeah, I'm very familiar with sort of historic tax credits and renovating. Building a new building is easier.
I think we know that, right?
Have you worked with community preservation groups and?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that specific group, but I've worked with mass historic and historical agencies that oversee it all, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, but that's great.
So I want to thank both of you for putting your hat in the ring. You're both of them well recommended, and I appreciate your potential time you're going to spend on this project. It is, we're going to have one of the biggest projects we'll probably entertain in a few years, so I think that the experience you both bring to the, to the project is going to be extraordinarily helpful. So I want to thank you ahead of time.
Yes.
So is there any other comments? Asked for a motion to approve Ted Lubitz to the Cohasset Town Hall Building Committee.
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And asked for a motion to approve Wayne, appoint Wayne Satchak to the Town Hall Building Committee. So, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Nice for hanging in there tonight.
Far with the delay. So now it's the update from the new Town Hall Building Committee, renamed from the, from the, from the Thrack.
Yes. So, since we came before you on January ninth, then hopefully you still have the memo or remember the memo that was dated January fifth, that we produced at that meeting for you guys. There's a couple updates that I, that we just want to share. We, as you know from our last meeting, we had undertaken a set of summit meetings with the chairs and vice chairs of advisory, capital, yourselves, and Mark and I, and Chris was also present for some of those. And essentially, those have wrapped up. You got a copy of what was the result, we're still going to call it a working document. We did have a very positive meeting with capital budget last night, with advisory last week, and they had a couple comments, a few things they wanted a little more clearly delineated in terms of some numbers and pull-out and things like that, which we will certainly do. I'll need to go to Shane for a couple of those things. But then also, if there's any comments certainly that you have, be more than happy to hear them and flesh them out a little more. And.
Now, do they have, Mary, do they have access to the document online?
Yes.
So you all got access to this document online, there's a box capability on the side of each of these to annotate any particular comments you want to have, which we can react to in turn and settle via the tool.
So for clarification, Jack and Paul, you have the link to the Google Doc, the rest of you, I think, got a PDF version, so we can give you all access to the Google Doc if you would like to just throw your comments in there, that makes it a little bit easier. And we've also had several conversations with the architects and the project manager over the last month on ways to create some efficiencies, perhaps a smaller footprint and then a lower cost to the project. So they have been working on that. They are not, you know, we're waiting for you to essentially help us push a go, as mentioned in the memo that was dated January fifth, in order to meet the deadline that was voted on at town meeting for a schematic design delivered at the town meeting, the annual town meeting, rather. The architects really need to start and, and be able to go in one direction at this stage. And just to build it out and give you a framework, most of the materials for town meeting are going to be wrapped by the end of March, since town meeting's at the end of April. Estimates will need to be back by then. In order for that to happen, the schematic essentially has to be completed by the first week of March. So there is time to do that in the next six weeks, but that's what we're seeking from you at this meeting. A few other things and updates, just so you're aware. We did submit a capital grant request to Massachusetts Cultural Facilities Fund. We got some great support from the Art Center, from the Dramatic Club, from the Rusty Skippers, also in line there. We are hopeful, it's certainly a project that is suited to their descriptors. Once the schematic design is complete, we've spoken with CPC and will be submitting an application to those funds as well. And we'll also be submitting an application to the SSPA, to the Playhouse Associates. So we are fervently looking for other funds and ways to help defray some of the costs for this project, which would mostly, pretty much all go to the historic portion of the building. There are also ways to set up private gifts, the Historic Commission can certainly take gifts. We've, we've had some conversations about five oh one C threes, so that is also something that can be explored. And anything else you could think of?
That's good, a good summary of where we are.
So, any questions?
Any question?
I, I just, I have a question on the acceptance of private donations and whether, it, it might not be so much a question for tonight, but something that we probably should have addressed sooner rather than later in terms of whether we, we want to go, go ahead and set up some other, some kind of fiscal agent or some, I don't, I don't know what the technical term would be, but almost like a revolving fund or just a, an account within the town system that could accept donations?
There's a, there's a lot of ways to do that. One would be to set up a gift fund, I mean, those happen, people give money to town, believe it or not, out of periodic cases. And gift funds get set up, and then they can only be spent for the purposes of the gift. And again, in this case, it would be set up so that it would be under the discretion of the board and the project. In the alternative, there's, there's, if you're talking about the project itself, there's also the potential long-range.
Endowment, upkeep, that kind of thing?
Endowment and upkeep and things like that. Based on some conversations I have with Jack and others, there's, there's a number of communities that have done things creatively. One that I had a conversation with the town manager this past weekend was Needham. Their, their auditorium was actually in office, it had been carved into offices for many years. And those were all ripped down and they were, it was renovated, and they have something called the Great Hall Performance Foundation. And they do some interesting work, I think Jen can reach out to those folks. And there are, and I think Rockport, and I think, you know, Plymouth has a, has a separate public building, there's a lot of, there's a lot of places that have done creative things with the arts community. And as I did a lot of the research, working with folks on the committee on this grant, I learned a lot more about Cohasset's theatrical history, so, which I shared a couple of weeks ago, the Hanson Brothers. I thought of, I thought of the hockey movie.
Miracle?
No, 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 no.
Slapshot.
He slapped shot, yeah. It was a different Hanson Brothers, they, they, these were one of the actor, actors.
I was just going to say, it's getting late.
Yeah, yeah, so, but they did, so Cohasset's international theaters go back to eighteen eighties. I mean, those folks were in town here in the eighteen eighties as a base of operations for almost twenty, for over twenty years. And those are an artist colony here, which I did not, did not know existed in the eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds.
I think there still is.
Well, I'm sure, there is, they're a little quieter, quieter about their presence. So there's a really, really long history in town of really interesting cultural, you know, of a, much more than a small town would normally have. And I think that's probably one of the reasons that the Sasha Playhouse ended up located here in the first place, because of the rich cultural history.
So, you know, I just, I think it's something that we should talk about, and maybe putting the car before the horse, you know, we may not want to, you know, bless some kind of fundraising, private fundraising effort until we get to town meeting or whatever, but I, I think we definitely have to talk about that sooner rather than later.
It's one of our objectives, we have set up. And as you all know, I've talked to you a little bit about setting up a separate five oh one C three. I do have a draft letter from the Land Foundation, which I'll share with Chris, and you can share it with you. So I don't want to let that get detoured off to the side, okay? We need to talk about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep, that's, to me, that's a private, that conversation that needs to take place. Yep, that's, to me, that's a pri- that conversation that needs to take place soon.
And, and there are some interesting things other communities have done, which, I mean, honestly, you know, you have to, you don't have to model it, but it, there's examples of things that people have done creatively.
And it, it's more than, it's a lot. It's more than ten communities have done this. This is not out of the box thinking, people are doing it all the time.
So I'm, I'm, forgive me, I, I, well, it's interesting to talk about different ways to, uh, raise non-public funds. Um, I just, I have to ask, the, the, the board went through a fair amount of exercise to come up with some more clearly defined objectives. So like, my question is, understanding those objectives, um, how has the committee absorbed them into thinking about the project?
Um, so we were, I, I think, very encouraged as a committee and I, and I realized that there was a, a general understanding that you wish that these, and not just you, that these objectives should have been set earlier.
Yes.
But still.
Yes, without, without wishing to flog that moral horse.
Yeah, we're done with that.
You should have been, your, your work should have been guided well in advance of that.
Um, but we felt, I, I think we all believed that they were very consistent with our thinking. Um, and the one place where we would perhaps vary a little bit was in terms of the location being forty-one Highland Ave. Well, we're all very firm about that. The committee is, uh, feels fairly strongly about, um, the footprint and the preferred solution that the architects put forward and we put forward at special town meeting. So, and that being a joint building, um, with the atrium. And there are cost advantages to that, there are efficiencies advantages to that, and I know that's a hiccup for some folks, so.
It, 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 it's not, look, I'm not an architect, I don't wanna be one. But I do know that the, the basis for the use that these objectives talk about
Mm-hmm.
for two structures are very different. And I do believe it's worthwhile, especially with two new members on the committee, to just simply take those objectives back, think about it, say, and ask yourselves, is there, you know, with this in mind, is there a better way to apply this? Look, all things considered, I still scratch my head over, o- o- over a lot of the concept, right? Um, we, we consider this building to be deficient because it's wood frame, but yet we're gonna build wood frame in pretty much the same place and doing the same things with a cockeyed floor design in the same way. And I have to ask, is that the most sensible use for administrative space? Now, I'm not saying that you move it elsewhere or anything else, or that you even tear apart the, the idea of linking two buildings,
Mm-hmm.
but rather simply rethinking the floor structure on its own, given that what we're really looking for is functional, flexible administrative space.
Mm-hmm.
For this, well, for, for administration.
Right.
Right? And at the same time, preservation for, as the, the objective says, future generations for civic and cultural purposes, which is an entirely different approach for a structure that's approaching a hundred and sixty-five years now in existence.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so that's why I'm asking the question. Is it, I, it, it sounds like what you're, you're looking at is, well, nothing's changed, let's drive ahead. And in order to do that, we need, we need to release funds today, the twenty-third, uh, to move it along. And to me, that doesn't, I don't know, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of rethink going on.
So, no, I just, I just wanna be clear on what, what are, what action we need to take tonight and what, what that precipit-
Do we need to take action tonight?
What if, or, you know, is there, is there action? What is it and what does it precipitate?
So could I suggest?
I mean, I don't think we necessarily need to take any actions, more of finding the update was the main purpose of this.
Okay.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I'd like to suggest an action.
Um, so that we could go forward with, you know, if there's some dramatic change, then we could certainly bring it up now and discuss options there. I think one thing which had come up was the, uh, five oh C three corporation, which I think, uh, we need to look at mechanisms for gifting. I think it's probably the main thing, whether it's through the town or through an independent five oh C three. But I think other towns have done it with gifting as a, uh, much like what was here a few years ago, where they had the schools, the police and, uh, and the town had gift funds, which were, two or three years ago were emptied out. We can certainly start that as, uh, as one option. I certainly don't wanna slow down the, the effectiveness of the committee and definitely get it to town meeting on a reasonable timespan.
Right, right, and to some degree, I'm sorry, I, you know, the fu- I, I see the funding as something very different right now. I mean, I think we've explored a lot. I wanna make sure that we talk about it as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
I think, you know, I wanna understand tonight what the committee needs to go forward, to whatever it is, to have their next meeting, to bring Shane Dedalus, you know, bring Shane from Dedalus in. Like, what is the next action step and what part of that do we play?
So, can I make a suggestion?
It, it just to be fair, I'm sorry, point of order, Jack did, did raise his hand.
And it's the selectments, do this, please?
She had just raised her question, that's all.
So, look, you know, I think Steve raised the issue. I, I really think that, first of all, we've just appointed two new members to their committee. They need to have a meeting to at least get enrolled in that meeting. And Steve asked for them to address how the current project meets the objectives that we all agreed to last week. So, I mean, I think that could be as simple as, you know, taking a look at the objectives and then having a pretty robust discussion whether or not the current project meets the objectives that we all agree to. And maybe we can do that, the, the next available selectments meeting to go through all that.
Well, I, I just, um, I wanna make sure, 'cause the committee had in their notes that they gave us today, they, they were gonna ask us and said that they needed some specific direction tonight in order to meet the timetables that I think we all wanna meet. Uh, so I would wanna make sure that, you know, they're comfortable articulating whatever it is that they need so that they don't fall behind schedule. Um, I think, which is similar to, I think, was what Diane was saying. And it's helpful to us to support the committee for us to know what it is you need. So don't be shy about asking us what it is so that we can debate it, because you, you did put that in your notes and I wanna make sure we address your needs, you know, what you need.
Um, so, I, I'll start and you hop in anytime you would like to. I think it seems that for, I totally take the point and, um, and it's understood that we do have two new members and should have a meeting in, altogether. I, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but if what you're looking for is, uh, for us as a committee to look at a joint versus a separated building structure between the two functions, um, that's certainly something that we can do, understanding that the background being as a THRAC committee, we did look at that and have numbers to support that. And the reason, as a committee, we chose that is there was a nearly twenty percent difference in cost to separate the buildings out. And so that was a decision that we made and a recommendation that we then made to the architects and, and reported out to you. Now, we could certainly-
So I'd like to go back and revisit that, but not here in a selectments meeting at a, a meeting with your committee. Now, you've got your two new members on. I think we could have a robust discussion with everybody involved to really dig down on the objectives that the selectman has set out and on the project as it's put together and on the potential of separating out the two buildings. And I think it, it's a discussion that needs to happen from, we realize you guys have been working on this for a year and a half and we realize that we're late to the party and we, we apologize for that. We should have set objectives a year and a half ago and we should have set a budget a year and a half ago, but we didn't do it. So now, you know, I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to get involved. And I know it's gonna cause you some pain, but that's, you know, I think as a selectman, I have to do that.
So, I just, just, I have a question, because I, um, you know, I've, I've been convinced over the past ten years, frankly, in the three different studies, that, that it, there is some financial sense to, and savings to co-joining the buildings. Um, my vote last week when we discussed the footprint was I did want to make sure we didn't lock ourselves into a literal footprint that existed already in the, in the proposed design that we saw at special town meeting. So, but, but I, you know, I think the concept of renovating and restoring the historic section of Town Hall and adding an administrative arm to that and using the space to its maximum, um, use, um, best use possible in, in both structures, um, is, is the first objective we had. So I feel like we're on the path to get there. I don't know that it's gonna be thirty feet by forty-two feet or whatever we saw in December. Maybe it'll be twenty-nine by thirty-seven or whatever. That's why I was reluctant to, to use the footprint model or vote last week. But I do believe that we ha- we are at a point where we need to go forward now. We need to say, the decisions have been, this has been discussed ad nauseam. We have, we have a concept and that's what we have been talking about, right? It's, we have a concept. We need to bring that concept to the next, next level. I don't know that at the next meeting, we may not be able to address these very issues and come up with, and, and, and have a, have a conversation and have it get tweaked a little bit further.
I don't see how that concept as it exists today
Mm-hmm.
meets the objectives that we set. It's just very simple, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Hold on. That's my point.
Yeah.
Now, I'm asking, I'm not directing, I'm asking.
Yep.
And I, frankly, I, 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 I wish I could wind back the clock at where a year and a half ago and we just set these objectives and the, and the committee was setting forth. But the objectives we set were clear. Look, I don't care what anybody has to say. The number one priority, number one priority is to create administrative space so this town can run.
Okay.
Right? The number two priority, by definition, was to retain that Town Hall for cultural and civic use. Well, right now, the way the project is laid out is that the Town Hall carries adminis- the old, the old eighteen fifty-seven building carries administrative use. And there's nothing that I've seen or heard that changes that conceptual, and I, I'd like to know how, if any,
Yep.
we're doing that, 'cause if not, the exercise in setting the objectives was a fool's errand and one we did for television. And I don't believe that that's the case. So that's what I'm asking.
So.
And, and finally, and I bring this back to the, to, to, um, the committee's memo, in which they, the, the final point is specifically by January twenty-three, which would be, oh, today, um, a preferred design concept would need to be approved by the BOS. Well, there's only one, and I still don't understand how it meets the objectives. So, in essence, in essence, I'm asked, I'm, I'm being asked to vote with a gun to my head. And I, I'm sorry, with two new members on the committee that we specifically appointed for the development expertise, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that matching game. It's really not that difficult of a concept to think about.
So, two, two things. Um, I, I believe that the discussions over the past, especially the past year and a half, um, and the plan, the plan as it is, in general, in concept, do meet our objectives. And perhaps I'm wrong, but, but if we get to the next, next round of meetings, next discussions with the full committee, with us and with, with Dedalus and, and maybe the architect, which we, we need to at least release funds to have that conversation, I believe. I don't know where we're at in that and that was gonna be another question, but I believe that that doesn't lock us into necessarily anything more than a historic restoration and attachment and then, then the administrative building in whatever footprint that might, or whatever square footage that might play out. The second thing I wanna say is, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I don't want anybody to feel like you have a gun to your head. Um, and if, if we are gonna kick this can to another meeting, I would highly recommend that it not be our next selectments meeting on February thirteen, that maybe we come up with another joint meeting where we make a commitment to making some definitive decisions, because I, I, we cannot lose time.
Uh, wait a minute. First of all, I, 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 I do need to respond to that. Let's talk about the gun to the head. Uh, one, one of the things that I really take to heart is spending other people's money with a great deal of care. Okay?
I do as well, Steve.
Oh, well, wait, 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 wait. No, I, this is about my statement, not yours.
All right, well.
All right? And I, and in doing so, the first thing I wanna know about is, what are we trying to achieve? What are we trying to achieve? So asking for that very simple process, okay? And asking the question again, is this the best way to achieve these objectives? Because these objectives are finally stated and clear.
Mm-hmm.
And they're in priority order for a reason.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I don't think that that's a strange thing. Number two, good, fast and cheap, pick any two, really does apply. We're gonna make best efforts to make town meeting. If we don't make town meeting, I would think it's because we're spending people's money wisely and with great prudence.
Agreed, yeah.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So rushing doesn't necessarily match up with great prudence.
But we need to, I'm not suggesting we rush the project and that's why when we discussed the timeline at last meeting, you know, if-
I had my reluctance stated then.
Absolutely.
So, and I, and I have to be upfront about this. I, I just, I just, I've been asking, I've been-
You're right, I interrupted.
That's all right, go ahead. I yield the floor.
Thank you. So, you know, I, I, the reason why, in my opinion, we've, we've had three Town Hall projects that have never got off the ground is because we made the assumption that we had to join the two buildings together and that the second floor of the old Town Hall had to be off, community office space, had to be town office space. I, I don't believe that's the case. I believe that assumption drives us to a place where we get a project that doesn't meet our objectives. And I know everybody wants to move forward, but I really wanna have time exploring the option of not changing what the thing looks like. As I've explained to everybody before, we look at renovating old Town Hall as old Town Hall and we create a new Town Hall. We don't change the plans, but we have the same connection between the two Town Halls. I think linking the two Town Halls together physically is a mistake. And I think over the last two projects, there are quite a few people in this town that felt the same way and that's why those projects died. So there needs to be, I, I know you guys wanna push this project, but there needs to be an exploration. There needs to, we're doing our fiduciary responsibility by doing this and by saying that we can't look at this, I, you know, I, I, I'm upset with that. I think we need to take a good look at how you separate the two buildings and if it works or not. And does it meet the objectives that we've all agreed on?
I think, I think, I think it does meet the objectives that we all agreed upon. Uh, as far as rushing this project goes, uh, this has been going on for a year and a half. Uh, all of these things that have been brought up have been discussed at these committee meetings. I think they even stopped all their progress for a month and reevaluated whether to do two buildings or one building or not. And they came back with detailed analysis showing that the one building, uh, the one, the attached two buildings as a one structure was much preferred, um, for a number of reasons, cost being a significant one. So I don't think we're rushing it at all. I do think that every time we seem to come to a point where, let's move it forward, you know, this, this is never gonna be perfect, it's obvious. Everybody's not gonna agree, but, you know, we can't keep stopping this project because people keep bringing up objections. Now, my view on this is, is that the, the committee and the town, I think, uh, has come around to consensus on the preferred plan and, uh, I think that we need to move ahead with it and, uh, we need to have a vote. I'm willing to, somebody should make a motion similar to what Diane is suggesting. I think we need to do that so that this committee can move forward. Uh, I, I've been to these meetings. This committee is fairly unified on, um, this discussion of two buildings or one building and, and so forth. So even if the two new members came aboard and had a completely different point of view, which I'm not convinced that they would, the committee as a whole is gonna be coming back with the same thing. So what I'm seeing here is I don't wanna continue to delay this. Uh, we're the leaders of this town, we're gonna have to make tough decisions up here. Uh, there's no need for further delay. We're not being incautious or lacking any fiduciary duties. This committee and our, and, and deep involvement, uh, with the town votes on it too, that have occurred, uh, have occurred over a, a year and a half. The, the town vote of a hundred and ninety members that were in the la- in the last meeting there was nearly unanimous. So, at any rate, I, I'm, I, I think that this project should, should go forward. I don't see anything that's gonna change and I don't think we should delay it, because we should not miss the, uh, the spring and have continued delays. That's how you'll kill a project, so.
What's the budget? What's the budget? What's the budget?
Cause if you've got a fiduciary duty here, what's your budget, Kevin?
Yeah, so they're gonna come up with a plan and then-
No, 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 what's your budget?
We've got the fiduciary duty.
What's the budget?
Right, well, they're gonna come up with a, a-
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
We've-
I don't have a, I have plans.
This feels like we're out of-
Wait a second. I don't-
This is, this is the conversation we had about Beechwood, you know? And we said, here's what's going to happen to Beechwood if we don't do this, this, and this. You guys said, ah, no problem, you know, let Chris do it. What happened? You know, this is, this is, these are capital projects.
See, this is where it's going off the rails.
You guys, you guys-
Mr. Chair, I think we've-
This is a mistake. This is, this is a mistake.
I think we've heard that.
This is a mistake.
I'd like to speak. So I think this is a reasonable project. I think we need to move ahead with it. I don't see that we're delaying as any useful factors here. We have the plan. There's a design that's out there that has been vetted over a year and a half. I'm willing to say go ahead with the plan. I, I see that the funding is definitely going to be an option here, which we have a budget, which is already there, and we have potential funding options, which we've explored. We've explored several options of location, design as a flexibility in the plan. There is a ability to potentially get state monies, to get private monies, and that's fine. I'm willing to go ahead with this, as the plan is established. Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm assuming that somewhere in there is a motion. I'm simply, I, I simply restate once again, I'm asking for the board to go back and simply look at and, and ask for the committee, not the board, to work through those objectives, including their two new members. Otherwise, why exactly did we appoint them? Why were we looking for people with development background? This is not rushing ahead. Right now, you've got, you've got one and only one option on the table with which we will compare those objectives, and that option pre-existed. So I'm simply asking, why can we not do that? That is, to me, the basic fiduciary duty. No, we don't have a budget. We haven't set a budget. We've got a budget that, that frankly, an architect put together for us and was vetted through the owner's project manager. We haven't, we haven't had anybody with any development experience look at that and say, well, wait a minute. What if? What if? And I'm simply asking for that. That is hardly a delay. That is hardly stopping the, stopping things. That's very simply doing our duty.
Thank you. Diane?
Paul, can we hear from the committee members? I just want to kind of-
Yes. Yeah.
Um, I'll start. Give a few things. In so, well, a couple things. So you received the, hopefully you see the PDF file. There are some sections in the back of that which compare two options.
I, I'm not sure. The only PDF file I have is a memo from you on January five.
Okay.
That ends, that ends with a, specifically by January twenty-three, preferred design concept.
Okay. So there is a document, a Google Doc that we've been speaking of. And the last two pages of that refer to the pricing out of what was called Option Three and Option Four. Option Three was the preferred scheme that we ended up voting on at special town meeting. Option Four was a separated building. So that information is certainly available. The other thing I'd like to correct is the very first study that was done in two thousand eight did not involve the administrative portion of the building at all. That was just purely to renovate and restore the historic building. So, and I think we all know the economic circumstances that surrounded the HKT study in two thousand fourteen and everything that was going on there. So that was perhaps a little ill-fated from the get-go. But my concern is that, is that perhaps what you're looking for is, in essence, another feasibility study in some regard.
We are not.
No.
Okay.
We don't need schematic diagram.
Let her finish, please.
I mean, I just want to-
Let her finish, please.
So, because of, and, and I don't want to superimpose a deadline on a process, but the reality is there is a bit of a deadline that we have. And forgive me if I didn't communicate that effectively enough along the way here. So we need to take direction from you. Quite frankly, we also need to have a healthy working relationship with you. And I-
Whatever one is, it doesn't feel like it.
So let me just say this. We, we don't need to go to town meeting with schematic drawings. We can do a not-to-exceed budget. Let's say, let's say we go with what the project is right now. We can go to town meeting and ask for thirteen million dollars not to exceed without doing all the, the schematic work that we're, we're saying we have to get done now. It would be nice if we did it. We don't have to do it. We know roughly thirteen million dollars is what that budget's going to be. So, you know, so, you know, I think there's, my personal opinion is there's enough concern about the project, as reflected by the questions in the Capitol Budget Committee last night, and some people in the advisory committee, and some other folks that have a lot of experience building, that we really need to sit down and explore your PDF and spend a little bit of time figuring out what's going on there and have a robust discussion about that. I don't think it's good to do in front of the cameras. I think we should do it with committee meetings. But the idea that we need schematic diagrams to go to, to town meeting to get this thirteen, look, if we, if we have these conversations over the next couple of weeks, and it all gets settled, and we come to a point where we all agree it's a thirteen million dollar project, we don't have to rush to get schematics done. I'm willing to say, let's support this. Let's go to town meeting for a not-to-exceed of thirteen million dollars and get it done. I just, all I want is for us to have an open dialogue in a group meeting off-camera where we can discuss every aspect of this project against the objectives that, that we've put there. That's all.
Let Mark say it.
Yeah. For sake of, for sake of, for sake of clarity, two things. First of all, there's five objectives as we understand them, that we're outlining in the last meeting, that being, town hall should be safe, functional, flexible, accessible space. Second, the town hall should remain at TownCon at Forty-One Highland. We know that. Third, motion that the town values the historic structure and wants to continue its use for civic, cultural, and community activities. Four, town seeks community partners. That's quite frankly with you guys. And five, that a budget be reasonable, prudent, and consistent be. What we have control of remaining is, is developing a design to the point where an accurate number for our proposal is created. For sake of clarity, what we understand that to be, and what we committed to at town meeting, is to deliver a schematic design. That's what we told them we would do. That's what we asked for the three hundred thousand to do. That's what they approved us to do as an advisory committee. Okay? My understanding of schematic design might differ slightly in that you can't build off it. My understanding of, of the schematic design is enough detail so that the associated contractors and bidding agents involved can come up with a number, right? So that's, that's where five comes in. So at the end of this process, we're talking about the one we committed to develop the town, the town meeting. We come up with a, I hesitate to call it a schematic design because it doesn't feel like we agree on what that term means. But we come up with a number we can stand behind that we think it's going to take to build this building in this envelope with this many people in it.
Okay.
Now, hold on. Just, I'm sorry, Jack. The other, so the reality, as far as we're concerned, based upon the work we've done over the past year and a half, optimizing to the extent that we can, the reality is to get to that point by the town meeting, which we committed to for the three hundred thousand dollars, we need to decide two things tonight broadly, just two things. Should the buildings be joined? Obviously, a case of some discussion here, number one. And then, number two, where do the offices go? And there's a reason for that. The, the design has not been static since the last time we talked, quite the opposite. We've gone through and looked at the buildings and taken a look at what it would take to take some cost out of the building. To do that, we've shrunk in the footprint of this space, the annex space, by taking advantage of the town hall, of the library storage space, moving library storage space over there, moving elevators into the historic building area, taking the, the floor realignment and eliminating the floor alignment, thereby saving so many on stairs and elevators and things like that. So we've skinnyed down the entire design to get to a better number than we had at town meeting. So the twelve point eight million dollars is probably going to be about ten percent less based on this design. Now, you could argue that should the administrative space over in the old town hall be moved over here? Fair argument. If you do that, you lose that savings that we just generated through all that optimization, because you have to bring the walls back out. You basically have to make the building about the same size. But the cold hard reality is, looking at the buildings co-joint has been, or separated or joined, has been studied to a certain extent, which we can argue about later on and discuss the merits of. But there are certain things, among them, the elevator space we just described, the use of office space to two to two buildings we just described, and some HVAC, which, sharing a chiller may or may not save a lot of money, but that is, is in the final design. All of those things pointed toward a co-joint building with the added advantage of a very attractive annex space, which makes the building more accessible, more pleasing from the street, and we think more user-friendly from a public point of view. So that's the case for that. And finally, it's also inescapable that you've got this building, which is arguably an aged structure, and you've got the historic building, which is unarguably an aged structure. Both of those things have to be addressed. One way or the other, as a town, if we fix this one up and build a new building, that one's going to fall down. If we core that one out and make it a purely administrative space, and we lose this building, then we have no place for the arts. So in our minds, looking at the two buildings in total is not only inevitable, but also optimal. So where we are at the end of, at the end of it all today is, after a year and a half of analysis, after a year and a half of considering all of the alternatives, this new design, which is different from the last one you've seen, apparently, because there, we did make those additional changes to further optimize it. This new design presents, in our mind, to make this target we talked about, to you, the board of selectmen, a decision to do two things. Decide whether the building should be co-joint, and decide whether or not moving those five people from one building to the other is, is important enough to open up the space again. Those are the two decisions.
And I wouldn't disagree with that analysis, but I don't see how the selectmen can make that decision tonight. I just don't see it. I totally agree with the analysis. You know, I think you now have two building professionals on the committee who can help you figure out the logistics of actually building these two buildings. And I think, you know, we should give this two weeks to hash out the details on this and address these two issues. These are the two key issues. Two weeks is not going to slow us down. We can do this in two weeks, get the two new members integrated into the committee, and get this done.
I think that if I done, what was recap there, exactly what town meeting gave direction to this town to do, which was is to come up with a schematic design deliverable for them to review and vote on, for a final vote in May. That's what the town meeting told us to do, told you to do, all of us to do, and gave three hundred thousand dollars for it. As far as this, co-joining the buildings, I'm not going to repeat myself. That's going on ad nauseam. The studies have been done. There's no doubt in my mind, these should be co-joined buildings to, to expand. To delay this project any further would just be not productive, and it would be a waste of time, I think, to do so. And as far as having the offices above town hall where they've been located for the last hundred years or so, I think that we can, in my, my view, we can give them the decision and can make a motion to that effect of allow those offices to still be located in town hall, and this committee can get to work. I think it would be irresponsible of us to kick this down, the can down the road anymore. I'm talking to all my board members. We're all experienced people, and you know what you're doing. You know, if we were to delay this a week, two weeks, or a month, we'd be here having the same discussions, in my view. And we're going to go over and over this again. I want a motion tonight, and I intend to make it if Diane or someone else doesn't, to move this along. These people in this town have, we've been given direction by the town. We've been, these questions that they've brought up, I've seen studied at ad nauseam. I'm ready to move. So, Mr. Chair, when you're ready, I'm ready to make a motion to this effect.
One, one last thing, if you, if I may. I would agree. I know what I'm doing. And that's why I'm up here. And that's why I'm asking the questions, and I believe they're reasonable.
Okay.
Kevin, you have a motion to-
Okay. I make a motion that we direct the building committee to proceed forthwith with the, quote, preserved, uh, design, but with, having the two main characteristics of one, that they be co-joined building, and that, secondly, they locate offices above the old town hall as they deem necessary to complete their design.
I'm sorry. I don't know if on a procedural level I can interrupt you in the middle of a motion.
Yes, go ahead.
You can.
Dr. Schubert?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to the chair. For clarity, I don't know if we delay this project for two weeks if that means that we would make a deadline or not, to be clear. If, if we were to come to resolution. I'll just put that out there. That said, I think it's safe to say both Mark and I are very uncomfortable with the current dynamics. And I think even if a motion did pass, we would, we would not-
Can you hear me now?
It would be a little bit of a tangled process going forward, and that's not going to benefit anyone. And we, we still may end up past our deadline. So I honestly don't really know.
Well, I have a, I have a modest proposal, which is, I would like the opportunity to meet with whoever has an interest in, on the board. I think, please go ahead with, with the motion. But I do think that the two building versus one building thing seems to be the major sticking point. I welcome the opportunity for additional discussion. I want to go through that. The analysis has been done. I'm more than confident in the, in the, in the approach we've taken. And I would like the two additional board members to be there at the meeting so they understand that. So I'd be more than happy within the next, I can't do it next week, but sometime in the very near future to have that meeting and hash those, those issues out.
Point of clarification, two additional board members and two additional committees.
Committee members.
Board members, didn't you know?
[laughing]
My apologies.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion, and just, just for comment. I, I do believe the analysis has happened. I don't believe that we are, we're committing to a path. We're not committing to any specific project. Town meeting voted very clearly to bring a schematic, schematic plan to them and appropriated the funds of three hundred thousand dollars to get there. So, you know, I'm, I'm very comfortable and very anxious to keep this moving. If we get six weeks from now and find out that all these calculations have been wrong, you know, we readdress. But right now, I, I, we have appropriated money. It is, it is up to us to go and, and get the designers in here, get Shane in here, and, and have as robust a conversation as we can, and try to answer any questions, although I don't, we've got really any that haven't been addressed. They certainly maybe have been answered not to some, to certain people's likings. And that's just the nature of a big project like this. We're not going to all be on the same page about every design detail. So the motion has been seconded. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that you'll never get a perfect answer to the perfect design for the perfect building. And I think this is a very reasonable design or a reasonable proposal. I think we have a great-
Designers.
I think we have a, a great project ahead, and I'm willing to ask for the vote.
I, well, I make a further comment of, because we're still in discussion. Keep in, we're the leaders of, we're the leaders in turn as board of selectmen. We have a, we feel a strong, strong responsibility, separate from committee and everything else. This is a major project. It's had its problems before. We need to make decisions to move this forward. That's what you're hearing. We're not always going to be in a situation where everybody agrees, but that's what we, that's what we, that's where the buck stops here. Let us worry about that. We understand those realities. We want this project to move forward. We have a sense of what the town wants. We go to town meetings and so forth. So I believe the board as a whole, when we speak, we, we know what we're doing. Let us take responsibility for that. We want you to just continue to do your job. But, you know, we're not here just to sit and wait and wave in the wind either. We want this done. We want it moved along. If this vote goes through tonight, which I hope it does, that's the direction we want you to take to go ahead and get the job done. And I think that you, and I welcome you talking and communicating with everybody. I think all of that actually can be done with this vote in place, and you can complete all that. But, you know, we're the leaders. We're here to make a statement. We're here to give leadership to the community. If you get this, this vote occurs, you know, this is our direction. We want it done.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will stipulate that the, the town meeting, special town meeting, voted to, to appropriate, not approve, but appropriate three hundred thousand dollars to move along the schematic design. After a robust conversation, which, at, at which point the board affirmed that we would spend a good deal of time looking at this. And this is the third time since then that we've met with the town hall committee. And only at the last meeting did we actually take the responsibility of putting together objectives and taking the committee on as one that we would direct. So I don't, I, I frankly don't get the same sense that each of the three of you do. I've been approached by any number of people with serious and sincere questions, not about stopping a project, but hey, did you think about the, the way these-
Not about stopping a project, but hey, did you think about the way these things went through? Hey, how about this? Boy, by the way, it sure would be nice if we understood a little bit more about that. And can we really afford $13 million? By the way, not for nothing, but it's one of the things that we did talk about is, where does this fit in the capital plan? We don't know that. And so, yeah, look, this vote's gonna go through three to two. I am, I am very, very appreciative, by the way, of the Chairman's acknowledgement that she's not crazy about the dynamic. Kevin, to be dismissive about that is a fool's errand. I said it before, and I'll say it again, without us being...
You don't need to be a...
I'm sorry, that's my opinion.
Okay.
All right?
Don't be a...
It's my opinion. I think it's a fool's errand. Because if this board is not united in the way that we go forward, it will be demonstrated at Town Meeting. And we need to be united to get the project to a point of being a success. I thought that Mark made a very reasonable recommendation. And it's been dismissed out of hand by way of this motion. So, go ahead.
So, I'd just like to point out that, you know, we're having essentially the same discussion before Special Town Meeting. Paul and some of the other Selectmen wanted to go to Special Town Meeting with a 12.8 ask to the committee. And I advised, I advised, I advised politically that was a mistake. And working behind the scenes with everybody else here, we came up with a compromise, which was the $300,000 so that we could keep this project moving forward and look at options. And there were a lot of people that I personally talked to to keep them copacetic at Special Town Meeting, so they didn't blow up and make a big stink about it. There was a lot of work done behind the scenes, as you all know, to make sure that Special Town Meeting went well. There was a lot of work that went on, and the folks wanted to see some options. They wanted to see, they wanted to see us do what we're doing right now. They wanna see us argue about these different options. I think the proposal that Mark recommended is absolutely reasonable. If we can do this in the next two weeks, I say we do it and get this thing done. Otherwise, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna vote no on the motion that's been made.
Okay, so I did not recommend $13 million at Town Meeting. I had gone to several meetings, and we actually went from the $1 million, which was originally recommended, down to $300,000. So, I, that's not correct. So, I'd ask for a vote. All in favor?
We need a roll call on that.
A roll call, please.
Okay. Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Jack Kinnearley, nay.
Steve Gomer, aye.
One more question from the...
So, I am not...
Proudly.
We would be seeking a little clarity from you in terms of what the next steps are here. To, and also what kind of reporting procedure you're looking for, what kind of communication chain that we're gonna have with one another, whether there's a point person from the Board of Selectmen, whether you act as a unit. I feel like there's some things that are undetermined right now. And however these next few weeks move forward, we need some clarity on that.
So, two weeks, could you come back?
I would love to come back next week, but you don't have a meeting next week. So...
You mean, your concerns, if I may, are how we're gonna communicate and function going forward?
Now that we're part of the, now that we report to the...
Any direction. We have to give them directions.
So, we independently came before you numerous times prior to us being brought out of the umbrella, so to speak. We'd just like to know how you would like this to function going forward. We would need to know when you would wanna be able to speak to Shane and the architects, when, that they would be expected to be here. There is a calendar from the last memorandum on January 5th that has deliverables in there. But you obviously, we need to hear from you about those. So, we're gonna be seeking some guidance about that. And however, Mr. Chair, you would like that communication to be done.
Could I propose that the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, you, the Chair of the Building Committee, get together and answer these, work out these questions, and come to us next meeting with a proposal as to how we're gonna go forward? Let's get to it. Lay it out. Decide what it is you want, what direction you need, what questions, and bring it forward, and we'll address it next meeting.
You know, I know this is not gonna be popular, but, I mean, I do think, to Steve and Jack's points earlier, that there's clearly, I feel like the questions have been answered. A lot of my questions have been answered, and that our objectives have been met with the work that's been done. But I think we do need a joint meeting as soon as possible with the Building Committee and the Board of Selectmen to just sit in a room and say, this is, these are the next steps. This is how we want the reporting structure. I mean, we, and we need, we need the professionals to come in here and help us understand all the information that we've been given. So, meaning Shane and, and the architects, assuming that they're, they're still, they would be the ones that we would continue to work with. So, I just wanna queue that up, maybe not for a Selectmen, the next Selectmen's meeting, but if possible, sooner in a joint meeting.
Can we do that? Maybe you want to try next week?
Just send me some dates.
Okay. Can I have dates for next week, see who is available?
If this is what to give, I think that's fine that we do that. But I still think preliminary work is always better done if the two chairs get to work on some stuff. And then, I think so that we have something to work with, that's all. I don't wanna start the meeting off going...
Right, right. I just don't wanna wait till February 13th for this to go this way. Because I do think we still need to make sure we're all, doesn't mean we're gonna agree, but we're all at least understanding the same information at the same time. And the problem, the problems in this business that we're in is when there's a lot of individual conversations, so-and-so talks, has talked to so-and-so, and has met with so-and-so, and we don't, as a board together, have the same information at the same time. And I think we need to be very careful about making sure that we get the same information at the same time, and have the same discussions, and the ability to talk amongst ourselves.
So, we can do it next week?
Whenever.
I can't do it until after the second. Second or after.
I will make myself available, and I will send everyone the link to the Google Doc, and would certainly appreciate any comments.
And could I suggest that the board members, the Selectmen send dates and times of availability over the next couple of weeks to Tracy? And then maybe distill it from there?
Next two weeks, preferably next week if you can.
When are we meeting again, the 13th? We don't want, we can't wait till that. So, we're talking about being by the 9th?
It would make some sense to keep on Tuesday if you could. Is the 6th possible if the 30th is not?
Let's just send dates and figure it out from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Thanks. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Will you take a comment?
No. No. Next up is Town Annual Update.
Just three quick things. Next Tuesday night from 5:00 to 7:00, Town Council Paul Durensis will be available in the building here, in this office, at 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. To work with any folks, we will have a citizen petition out there who wanna, you know, work through some questions or ask some questions about how the process might work on the deadline of citizens petitions in February. I don't remember all of my schedule in front of me. If you have it, you can...
No, I, in fact, I was gonna ask that question, what the deadlines are.
It's February what? It's the 14th, I think.
And we approved that schedule like a few meetings ago, right? Is that up on the website?
February 14th. It's Valentine's Day. It's citizen's petition. So, give someone you love a citizen's petition for the holidays. So, so, next Tuesday, 5:00 to 7:00, Paul Durensis will be available here.
And have we had any interest? Has anybody proactively called Town Hall to ask this question? Okay, so I just, can we make sure that we actually get back to that person?
Well, we already, we are, there is a model citizen petition form on the website, and there's other information which we point people to.
Right, I just wanna make sure if they've, if they've taken the effort to call here, that we at least...
February 7th, the board has, had requested a forum on retail marijuana sales. We're working to pull together, to get a panel set for February 7th. That's a Wednesday night. There are no non-conflicting takes anymore, 7:00 p.m. That will be comments, working to get folks from the retail end, there's a company called Weed Maps, and I've met at the MMA and other places. Trying to get the regular target community engaged if we can, get someone from Kansas Patrol Commission or some other agency. Folks from law enforcement. Bill, Chief Quigley's working with the District Attorney's Office. And also from the, I guess we'd call it the prevention community as well. So, we're trying to have a balanced panel of folks from, and have a good, robust conversation, which would allow the board then to give direction. It's been February 13th about how to proceed with a warrant article, one way or the other.
That was my, that was my question about whether, you know, because if there's any kind of a bylaw change on the warrant for Town Meeting, then you would probably need to be back up in time for some hearings.
We will have time. I, I'm going to draft a, I'm gonna, I already, Council has various options drafted.
Okay.
There's already a general retail ban. That's a, it's already been produced by a number of the communities. There are other aspects which I'm going to tonight. It's late. The retail doesn't just mean pot shops. There's also back office. There's grow offices. I don't know if those would be appropriate remotely, but there are other aspects of retail that do not involve sale to the public in the community. So, those will be things that, I'm not suggesting, I'm just telling you that.
Right, I just wanna make sure that this, I just wanna make sure these conversations are gonna bring up questions. We're gonna need to be able to act on action really quickly.
And then one last thing I just wanted to share with all of you. The town received a board from Maya. This is for risk management innovation, and the risk management innovation release has two pieces. One is the William James Interface Referral Service, which we have talked about it at prior meetings, where it's a referral service that helps get folks, particularly to mental health and wellness service providers, regardless of experience for the private portal, and we partner with a lot of other communities on the South Shore. And the other is State Harbor, which is really with the, which, whose director started officially on Monday, the new director hired from Grant. So, this is the third year in a row that the class has been recognized by Maya for proactive and creative programming. So, it's a testament to the support that all of you have given and the work that you've enabled staff to do. So, with the community as a partner. So, those are the three quick updates for you. Thank you.
Good job. Selective update? Steve?
I had nothing.
Okay.
Nope, nothing. I was...
The MMA meeting, I know several of the Selectmen were gonna go and didn't go. The town is, it does cover the cost for that, and if you're not gonna be able to go, please let the town know so we can cancel the, the cost as possible. MMA was last weekend. I did not, maybe I was working. I also went last night, which this goes under topics originally anticipated, you worked 24 hours, 40 hours. I went to the Hingham Planning Board, and I just wanna hand out, these are articles that are proposed by the Board of Selectmen for marijuana dispensary ban and marijuana dispensary and production and cultivation taxation. The other one is what if there is a tax? And they're recommending how to go about that in their town meeting, which is coming, that went through Town Council. The other thing which I have, although they don't have it in a PDF file, is the zoning amendment warrant articles that are being planned for the Hingham Planning Board, as well as the ban on marijuana with the zoning board. In addition to, they have a nice flow chart, which was discussion of recreational marijuana production, cultivation, handling, processing, shipping. So, I would like those who are interested in that, review these. I think these are relatively straightforward, should we decide to put this on for Town Meeting for a discussion of whether we ban or tax commercial use of marijuana in production and cultivation and shipping.
If we ban, if you were to adopt a ban, what would be the logic in adopting a tax?
If the ban fails. So, you put both on, and if the ban fails, then you would say, do you wanna tax it? Then you would open up the possibility of commercial production, sale, growth, and transportation and handling, processing basically. So, there were, basically, it's the belts and suspended. If one fails, then you can still tax it. It allows it to be done all in one sitting. You certainly can only put one on. You can just say whether or not to ban, yes or no, and then discuss the taxation at another point.
Has this topic been brought up at Master Plan at all, or Master Plan's just off the...
This has been shared. Chris, have you seen this?
Is these?
Yeah. Just now. This was just last night.
It was last night.
Marijuana, his, I didn't have a Master Plan.
Kristina Root. She was the coordinator. She called me about it, and so we agreed to keep it coming.
So, I'd like to, everyone look at this and see is the options for potential Town Meeting warrant. That's all I have. Anything else?
Just minutes. I move that we approve the minutes of January 2nd and January 9th, 2018.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
It matters under my own hand.
We're done.
I move we adjourn.
Will we adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Move to adjourn.